And get started, call the meeting to order. And our first, uh, first piece of business is to do a pledge of allegiance. If everyone will, if everyone please name it. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence and, uh, everyone will observe that real quickly, please. First up is our agenda approval. We've got one slight modification on the agenda, be under item number 15. Uh, we will move F personnel to G. And then we will make F will become a brief technology discussion with our IT department and some potential computers for our new county commissioners. So, uh, if there are any other adjustments to the agenda we need to make, hearing none, entertain a motion to approve.
Chairman Wetzel, I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as you presented with one revision.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we've got an agenda. Uh, next up is our approval for the minutes from our regular meeting dated November 16th, 2022. Those have been provided to you in advance from our board clerk. I assume you guys have had the opportunity to review those. Any corrections or alterations that need to be made to those minutes? Do I have a motion we approve?
I can move approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Next on our agenda is public comment. We've got appears to be six folks signed up for public comment. Public comment remind you is three minutes. Mandy, our board clerk is our timekeeper. Our first person up is Jim Tibbetts, right on cue. Come on up, Mr. Tibbetts.
Well, I don't have time to get my camera set up, but I'm a one man show tonight, so.
All right.
Oh, I don't have anything else, but I'd like to comment on the proposed that's going to be coming up on the noise ordinance. I had a chance to review that in Hot Springs at the library with a group and I have some concerns. The first one is that the maximum fine, it could be that this is a state law, would be $1,000. And if sheriff to show up, he would not be able to stop the music. They'd only get fined $1,000 later. This is my understanding and I believe, Mr. Guth, you can confirm that? All right. And, uh, so if these venues are making 20 grand a night, they're just going to write this off as a cost of business. So we need to have punitive fines for third offense, permit revoked. But wait, they don't have to have a permit because the way these rules are written, they're putting commercial businesses in a residential agriculture zone. Is that right? That's right. So anybody can have a music venue without, without even having to get a special use permit. Is that correct? No, okay, it's not. All right. Um, revoking a special use permit, there could be some strength there if in fact state or federal law says we can't charge more than $1,000 or have other punitive measures in place. So I suggest we look into those. Lastly, you know, I think, um, that this is kind of following the same pattern as the biomass thing. They were trying to zone residential agriculture as heavy manufacturing and, uh, and say it was grandfathered in their sawmill. Even though our land use ordinance rules today clearly indicate that this heavy manufacturing can only belong in industrial, heavy manufacturing industrial zone, these biomass plants were subject to blowing up and lord knows the pollution, truck traffic it would cause. And it's lucky this didn't happen at Ramsey lumber. And if the company, the biomass company hadn't been so arrogant to say, we're not even going to pay you, we're going to give you shares in the venture. Check it out. It's, and so we barely missed this one and I welcome a stronger community effort working with the county commissioners to stop Godzilla. I want to say a word, but I'm not gonna. Uh, these Godzilla sized plants, they're not, they're not our neighbors. They're not the Reed family trying to do some road work. These are international companies and they're trampling not only, and we have a chance to stop it, not just for Madison County, but for the rest of the forests of Western North Carolina and possibly the southeast. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbetts. Uh, next up is Martha Bodenhorst. Martha Bodenhorst, I'm sorry, I apologize. Sorry, Martha.
I, um, I have a sound guy that is coming in, but he's running a little late. So if it's okay, he's going to step in right after that. Hopefully shortly.
As long as he gets here in your three minutes, we're good. Box running.
So as you know, my name is Martha Bodenhorst. I am the owner of the beach. At first, first of all, I'd like to welcome the new commissioners, Mr. Alan Wyatt, Mr. Bill Briggs, and Mr. Jeremy Hensley. But now let's talk about, um, the ordinance, the noise ordinance. Even though I am grateful for the time that Mike and Mr. Guth have dedicated to the noise ordinance from Madison County, myself and other business that are in the event and entertainment industry feel there is quite a bit of work to do as this draft is quite biased and in honest truth has been written intentionally to harm the business, especially the rich. There are several proposed factors that are ambiguous and are not in line to help everyone. I wish I could go more in detail, but I'm going to focus on just a few of them. The decibels. The decibels are unrealistic and as you are, as you are proposing are to quiet nature. I don't know if the due diligence has been done as what 50, 60, and 70 decibels is, but 50 decibels is me talking. So therefore, um, you basically telling to, for the nature to be quiet, Mr. Garrison. Rowan Mitrani, uh, he is the owner of a RAM audio and video. And he came to our property and went around the property to measure the decibels. At the end of our property and in, in the property of Bodie, which is my closest neighbor and friend of Mike Garrison, um, it registers at 54. With that said, the second definition of disturbance, which is why I brought this picture. It says that, um, a person with ordinary sensibilities is someone that runs a tractor right next to a property, right when the event starts and to the event ends. This is a tractor that he positions in the property line with a light that reflects to the chateau. Um, there are provisions for protecting, um, supposedly the business, but my question is where is the provisions that protects us from people like Mike Garrison that comes in one night, give us a civil citation and then the next day turns around and give us a criminal citation for noise? So my question is, Mike, if I was to call the police department and complain about Bodie putting the tractor, would you give him a civil citation and call him the next day and give him a criminal citation? That's my question to you. You intentionally harmed the business and it's costing us a lot of money and it's also costing a lot of these people money because eventually this is going to take two measures because I'm not going to stay quiet anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhorst. Time's up. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you so much.
Do we have, uh, just so you guys know, she provided a handout to everybody as well for you guys to review, for us all to review. Next up on the list is, uh, Mr. Tony Ponder.
Chairman Wetzel, board members, it seems the voters have placed three new commissioners under the county Christmas tree. Congratulations. You now have, have the opportunity to operate, to audit the sheriff's department as well as the county's several fire departments. If they have nothing to hide, they should welcome these audits. You can ensure that the county growth is well planned and organized. We don't want our county to become a haven for illegals and drug addicts. We don't want a drug clinic on every corner, no more blighted development like has occurred on Silver, off Silver's Mill Road, not in the name of economic development. You have the opportunity to scrutinize bloated education requests. You can demand that transgender filth and wokeness be kept out of our schools. I urge you to verify the safety of proposed 5G cell towers. In Europe, they're taking them down. Beware of accepting grant money. I'm told that you have dozens of additional employees that are holdovers from expired grant money. With courage, you can eliminate these needless positions. Use the savings to give hardworking county employees a decent salary increase. The health department. For too long, they have been pushing unsafe, untested products into the public and to the arms of healthy, innocent children. Last year, the health department overspent the budget by $600,000. In my opinion, our health department needs an attitude adjustment. You can listen to incompetent legal advice and be buffalo of state law, or you can do what is best for the county. We will stand behind you when you act in our best interest. We wish this board the best. You have a rare opportunity to polish the jewel of the Blue Ridge and make it shine better than ever before.
Thank you, Mr. Ponder. Up next is Glennis Ponder.
Well, you're going to do something about courthouse. And there's something missing from the courthouse. And that's our Robert E. Lee.
The microphone is not for the room, folks. It's for the live feed. If she doesn't speak up, I can't help that. It's for the live feed. It's not for the room. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. All right. Carry on.
Uh, there, uh, Robert E. Lee monument disappeared. And in the news record, there is an article, uh, way back when they started the monument that the original die was given to the North Carolina, um, ladies that, uh, well, it's the, uh, North Carolina, whatever anyhow. What I would like to suggest is maybe that you could get that die from the people that have it and you could make several plastic monuments. And so when they would take one down, you'd have another one, you could put it up. We could have our Robert E. Lee Dixie Highway monuments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excuse me, could we get the live feed camera so it's not hitting the back of the public commenter's head? I mean, if we moved it over there, it could get you all and at least we can see some of the commentators, right?
Can we do that, Jamie? Thank you.
I will not be able to see the board if commenters are standing in front of me. I'm sorry.
Well, I think you're somebody that's moving the camera right here.
Oh, yeah.
Move the board?
Camera, yes.
Yeah, we're just moving the camera. All right, up next, Joanna Cahill. Rod, can we remove that board right there? That might solve a little bit of our problem. Hello, Ms. Cahill.
I have extreme anxiety and hate public speaking, so I'm not going to take up this full three minutes, but, um, thank you. Um, I just received the noise ordinance and the only thing that I was concerned about was the decibels listed. Um, right now I'm speaking at about 62 decibels. Um, so I'm concerned, being a person who likes to speak, a normal conversation is between 60 and 70, so 55 seems pretty unreasonable. Um, but I did hear that you guys are going to hire a professional to make assessments. Is that correct? Yes.
I want to clarify, public comment is just that?
Okay.
When they address Mr. Guth or they address the board, that's not, that's, that's not public comment.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Use your time and we'll answer those questions afterwards.
Thank you. Um, it did say that, um, in the business district that the noise decibels for the day was going to be 60, which is again, under a normal conversation. So I don't understand how this noise ordinance, um, is not biased. It seems pretty fairly targeted. Um, so hopefully a professional comes in and can actually, um, come up with a more reasonable, um, noise ordinance. That would be great. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cahill. And our last person that signed up is Carl Batchelder. Carl?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and, uh, welcome to the new members. Um, I'm going to talk tonight during public comment about public comment. Um, I see on the agenda that Mr. Honeycutt will be speaking about public, the public comment policy. Um, I admit I found it odd that the county commissioner will be, uh, that a county manager will be weighing in on that. However, I'm glad it's getting a forum. Um, the public comment format, the agenda specifics for the meetings and public record availability are all interrelated. For instance, most of the information that you all have in your information packets are public records, but they only have useful meaning to the public before the meetings. They have almost no relevance to anyone in the community after the meetings. There are counties out there that publish the packets along with the agenda on a nice website, some of them a week before the meeting. The folks of those counties benefit from that by having the information available to them to digest in advance of the meeting, giving them time to see what's important to them, maybe come to a meeting, maybe stop beyond the line at Ingalls and have a word with you before the meeting on a topic. So a reason why the status quo misses the mark can be seen every month. You know, right now, um, an agenda is put out, it's very sparse and I often have conversations with friends about, geez, what is this topic really going to be about? You have no idea. So you have no way to know whether you're really interested in speaking to it because you don't know what it's really going to be about. Um, an example, in this week, so I'm not picking on anything, but Brad is going to discuss site development, evaluation, and recommendation. I can't tell in advance whether that's something that I'd be interested in, but if your documentation packets were available online, uh, it may, may do the job a lot better. The bottom line is just by reading the agenda, you can't answer the who, what, and why or anything. So I would ask that you embrace the spirit of the open meeting and open record statutes and publish your information packets before the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Batchelder. As our last individual signed up for our public comment portion of the meeting, so at this point we will close that portion and move on. Up next is Karen Gravel and members of our courthouse committee in regards to the courthouse committee renovation presentation and recommendations.
First and over first.
It's all good. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks, sir. We're here this evening to report, uh, to you all the findings and recommendations of the courthouse renovation committee. Uh, on behalf of that committee, let me thank you for the formation of the committee and for allowing us to serve in such an important role. I appeared before this board about a year ago on behalf of our 24th judicial district committee and asked that, or suggested that you all form a committee so that judicial employees would have a, some input on the functionality of the courthouse going forward and what it's to look like going forward. And once again, just let me, uh, say thanks that we appreciate you all allowing us to do that. I believe the main charge or the primary charge that you all asked us to do was to figure out the best way to utilize the $3.8 million state funded grant that was issued to the county by either remodeling the current facility or using those funds, uh, toward a construction of a new facility. Let me just say that majority of the folks that you all appointed on that committee, tried their best to figure out a way to use our current courthouse going forward. But our committee was formed, I believe, on February 22nd. We met 15 times, uh, from that date until now with various committee members, uh, assigned various tasks in between meetings. Uh, we employed an architect firm to help identify our needs, including both current and future needs. Also, a space needs assessment was performed and Karen, who's with us here tonight, I wanted to say she done an outstanding job and helped us with that and we appreciate that. So now I'm going to call on her to present and her findings and recommendations. And Judge Baker is here and he's going to present the findings and conclusions and recommendations of the courthouse committee. And may I add that these recommendations were voted on and passed unanimously by the nine member committee that you all appointed. Karen, I guess you're up.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Guth.
Thank you for having me this evening. Um, I'm historic preservation architect and I've worked primarily, I feel awkward just talking to you guys, but just know that I'm talking to you all as well. Um, I've worked on historic buildings, um, most of my career and, uh, actually loved the Madison County courthouse and it's been a pleasure over the last six months to study it and try to figure out the best thing for it moving forward. So I think you all received this presentation in a packet earlier this week. Um, I'm going to try to go through it as quickly as I can, but I also want to be comprehensive in explaining kind of the three-pronged approach that I took to the project. Number one, we looked at the physical aspect of the building. Uh, what is its condition? What are the character defining features of the building? Why is it historic? What's important to save in the building and, um, what are those things that, um, you want to treat with respect according to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Preservation? Secondly, um, we went through some test fits of, uh, possible improvements to the courthouse to see, uh, how much space it would take to, to do what needed to be done to the courthouse. Um, that's my architect brain looking at how we can kind of rearrange things to, to make them work better. And thirdly, we had interviews, um, with people that work in the courthouse and the people who've worked there in the past, um, to talk about qualitative aspects of a program. What kind of adjacencies do you need as well as understanding how much space everybody needs, um, how many rooms, how many people? Um, so it, it's kind of a, a three lens approach, um, to understanding the courthouse. The process included a summer site visit in June where I was here a couple of days with a colleague of mine and we, um, conducted all of these interviews and did, or can, and revised the condition assessment. There's one that was done in 2015 and we brought that up to speed and then also, um, looked at that, um, kind of in the context of, of how to move forward. We also looked at a couple of adjacent buildings, which I'll get into as well. Um, and we had interviews with all the users at that time. And then at that point I could develop a laundry list of issues to address with the current cop courthouse. And so we went back and started studying different things that could be done. And over, we had several virtual meetings with the committee, um, during that time and then came back in September and that's when everything started to gel in a direction that made sense. You all have an assessment report. That's the top document that, um, that's just a written narrative of everything that happened and how we got to the recommendations. And then appendices, um, that include all the kind of reference material. So first, I'd like to make sure that everybody understands this is a very important building for you all. As, as you know, it's kind of the focal point of the town and it, it is part of the character along with the river, the bridge, the railroad, the downtown, it, it is a focal point and needs to be. to be treated with respect. But from a preservation standpoint, it's an important feature of your town, and I would urge you, at that scale of the city, to understand that it needs to be taken care of. But when you start looking at the building, all of the exterior features or character defining features, the wood windows, the brick masonry, the cornice, the bell curve, the stone base, all of that, along with the portico and the entry, all that contributes to this building being such, have such stature where it is. On the interior, all the character defining features include all the woodwork, plaster, the large spaces, the stairs, this, we've got some balusters that are missing, but these stairs and the space that they produce are all very important. You've got things like transoms that don't need to be taken out. You've got all of the clerks, sorry, clerks shelving, the courtroom space in itself is a character defining feature, and I'm sure some of you remember when there was a drop ceiling in there, and that was restored over time. But that space, that volume is, contributes to what makes this courthouse. A summary of the conditions that we found, I would call the exterior is in fair to good condition. It has some things, there's some masonry that needs to be repointed, the windows need to be restored, repainted, the roof is kind of, is aging and needs some help. The interior is in fair condition, the electrical is certainly outdated, mechanical has piecemeal systems that need to be replaced, the restrooms are inadequate, there's, there's ongoing IT concerns, there's mold, the security, I'll get into the security in a minute, but we came up with recommendations that just addressed the physicality of the building. And with the exterior scope, this is, these are all sort of deferred maintenance items that need to happen and can happen independently of whatever happens with the interior of the building, but our recommendations are replace the roof, repoint the exterior, waterproof the exterior foundation walls, restore the windows, restore doors, and paint the cupola. The interior conditions, and this is couched in a, in a, in a way that there's, there's so much that needs to happen from a systems perspective, and that's, I mean, electrical, IT, security, and HVAC, that to really do a decent, a good rehabilitation of the building, everybody needs to move out. It's, it's hard to do a piecemeal restoration or rehabilitation of the building without moving people out, which when you start to think of that in the context of what to do with it, that, that becomes added complexity for the county. Also, there are code issues with the building right now, the, there's, the restrooms are deficient, exiting is a problem because there's only one entrance on the ground floor, and that's where the security happens. It's kind of, it's a, it's a bottleneck of a door right now. So, so those are all kind of the physical aspects of the building that are, that need to be overcome. While I was here in June and we had all the interviews with different people, we also started to have, develop a list of programmatic issues with the courthouse and what, what needs to happen with current courtroom and way, the way courthouse is operating now. And those are divided into two different categories. I would call them safety concerns and functionality concerns. And from a safety perspective, the security screening at the, at the only exit for the building is a huge concern. There are multiple paths of people crossing each other, which is fine, except you have people who are accused of crimes, going in the same door as the judge, going in the same door as the public and the, and the jury, and there's just not a lot of separation that is supposed to be happening in a courtroom of this time. There's some mold issues, outdated wiring I've already talked about. From a functionality standpoint, the jury space where they deliberate is too small, there's no place for jury to really have a, they have to go out of the courthouse, as you all probably experienced, for jury recess. The storage is lacking, there's no holding cells, the acoustics are difficult for both privacy and hearing, and just having the one courtroom makes it less flexible in general for having multiple court cases to be heard. And as everybody repeated to me, parking is an issue downtown. So, so if, if you're with me still and haven't fallen asleep yet, there's, there's building issues, there's programmatic issues. And so we started to take all of those things and say, well, what can we do to improve the situation? And so, we studied some test fits of, test fit A, I would call improvements to the courthouse. This included changing the way security enters the building, designing a new egress path out of one of the sides, providing a new co-compliant restroom, adding a, having a second entrance that would also be used for bailiffs of prisoners, and increasing the jury deliberation room, and also using space in the old pharmacy and in the small, the third floor of the bank building for added space. This idea was good in that it helped create a secure area for screening, have a separate entrance for prisoners, egress was improved greatly, restrooms were added, the building is good for a new client, new use possibly later, and you'd have a little bit bigger jury deliberation room, but it did a whole lot of other things that caused consternation, including reducing the clerk space, you still had a small jurors' room, you didn't have a jury assembly space still, district attorney had to go out of the building to make all these spaces, there's still no room for holding prisoners, and the needs were simply not met. So we pushed it further and said, well, what else can we do to the building? And so we tested pulling the elevator up to the third floor so that you could create a larger jury assembly space in what's currently storage and added holding cells in the building. And still, this had the same effect of pushing people out of the building that needed to be there. And so it still did not meet the needs of what the court system needed. So, so we were at a place where we, we knew that we, everything was not fitting in any of these buildings. So, the committee asked me to also test and come up with what I would call test fit C, which is kind of bare minimum. So, if we moved to a place where we're not going to use the courthouse anymore, what would be the bare minimum of scope for that? And so I've, we would, this kind of suggests of approach where we, we're not going to use the courthouse anymore, and that's really the conclusion that we were coming to. So what do you do in the interim? And so, we provide an exterior means of egress, that needs to happen no matter what, there needs to be another door out of the first floor, code compliant restrooms need to be provided, need to address the mold and possibly repaint and re-carpet in the building as a, as short-term means, and this, this just helps get you to a place where you have a new courthouse. I mentioned that we looked at other buildings. These buildings are not actually owned by the county, these are privately held buildings that we looked at, and they did provide some nice space, the third floor of the bank building could be used for district attorney, there was also, but that, that was, there were concerns about the district attorney being there with no security or having to add security. The third floor could also be good storage space, the first floor possibly could be used as rental. We also looked kind of more extensively at the old pharmacy building across the street to see if it would work for jury assembly or an added courtroom, and those would be small spaces, but that was a possibility. This is the old pharmacy building, it's basically a large room, and then the, oops, the, the third floor of the bank building gave you some historic spaces as well, which you don't want to start messing that up either because it's historic space. So, offices or storage would be conducive to these spaces, but again, we didn't have any security there. So, going along, looking at all these ideas too, we put costs to these approaches to understand, you know, order of magnitude, what, what does this mean from a dollar standpoint? And so that you could have that research as well. And, so, we've had the condition assessment, we've had the programmatic study, we did test fits, we figured out what that cost. I had one more piece of data, and that was research coming in from both judges and from the state on how much is the courthouse used. And right now, it is programmed, I wouldn't say necessarily used completely at 97% of the time, but what that says is that it needs to be open and available for use 97% of the time out of a year, and that's heavily used and doesn't leave a lot of room. You all know when there's Superior Court and it goes long and somebody else gets bumped and the one courtroom doesn't leave a lot of time or space for flexibility. And typically, you'd want that number to be down at 75 or 80% utilization. We also looked at the caseloads in other counties, and Madison in your district is falling right behind Watauga County in the number of caseloads, and they have three courtrooms. So when you start to look at what you all have versus, you know, a larger county that has three courtrooms and the capacity to have multiple courts going on, that factors in. And then a late, a late breaking sort of data point that came in was from the state, and they were projecting out staffing needs also for counties, and this data went to further show that you needed more people working in the court system. So, bringing all of that together, we have about 9,500 square feet assignable in the courtroom right now. You really need about twice that right now to do what you need to do, and by 2030, you're going to need three times that. That's kind of the long and the short of it. I, as I mentioned earlier, I'm a historic preservation architect. I want to reuse historic buildings as much as possible, but we have come, I have come to the conclusion, I believe the committee has come to the conclusion, that this courthouse is not, it's not serving the needs of the court system adequately or safely, and it, we need to find another use for the courthouse. So, that's where we got to. I would say that we did look at phasing options. Once we came to the conclusion that the courthouse needs to not be the courthouse anymore, do you do a new courthouse now? Or do you do, and when I say now, I mean in short term, three to five years, or do you do one in 10 years? And given all that has to happen to the courthouse to keep it safe and moving forward, and how many steps that would take, meaning a new courthouse later, we, we came, all came to the conclusion that is the most efficient and effective thing for Madison County to focus on finding a new way to have a new courthouse in the future. And so, I believe in the heart of my heart that this is the right direction. I came into it really wanting to this be a hail mary pass for the courthouse, but it really is not serving you all in the way that it needs to right now. So Judge Baker is here. Oops. Oops, sorry. Push this button.
This one?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. As has been said to you, about a year ago, we came before you asking that a committee be set up to give us some idea, give an idea of how the money that we were being given by the state for the courthouse should be used. We have now a recommendation to you that has already been given to you about needing a new courthouse. Let me just tell you a little bit about how we've come to that. It wasn't something that we really just jumped into. We, we really looked at our courthouse severely and strenuously in an effort really to continue to make use of it. We know that the courthouse can have a, a long use for the county in a different capacity, but a little bit of knowledge about the history of the courthouse, I think, would be helpful. On February 11th, 1907, Madison County Commissioners, there were three of them at that time, sitting about the same way that you all now, were given an idea of building a new courthouse. They passed a resolution calling on the North Carolina General Assembly to authorize the construction of a new courthouse in Madison County. As the resolution that was passed by the 1907 Madison County Commissioners stated, "For the purpose of erecting a new and modern and up-to-date courthouse in the town of Marshall." And the General Assembly did pass the legislation to enable the county to build a new courthouse, and in June and July of 1907, the Commissioners passed a resolution providing that a new, larger, more commodious courthouse was a public necessity and that a new courthouse was to be constructed. It was to cost not exceeding $30,000. Now, the courthouse that is used in Marshall now, that serves Madison County now, would replace the first Madison County courthouse that had been in use since just a few years after the county had been in existence. Madison County was formed in 1851, and the new courthouse that was in use for Madison County, the first real courthouse, was built in 1857. The first courthouse was described by the Commissioners in 1907, when they passed the resolution to build a new courthouse "as utterly inefficient for the transaction of public business, condemned by grand juries, and was almost ancient in age, some 50 years old." Now let me point out that the first county courthouse I'm talking about was less than half the age of the courthouse which replaced it, that's our courthouse in use today. The old courthouse had to be torn down before the new courthouse could be built. Work in preparation for the new courthouse began in 1907, and by September 3rd, according to the Madison County record, the old courthouse had been cleared away. The new contractors for the new building were to begin work on the new courthouse later that week. And then in July of 1908, the county Commissioners met and a resolution was adopted that read, "It appearing to the Board that the construction of a new courthouse has been completed according to the plans and specifications in a workmanlike manner, it's therefore ordered by the Board that the same be and is hereby accepted." So with, as far as we know, no real fanfare or celebration, Madison County's new courthouse, that's the one we have now, the one you're looking at on the screen, was put into service in 1908. In 1908 then, Madison County had a brand new courthouse, and that is our current courthouse. It's been in continuous use for the last 114 years. That time span for our, that our courthouse has been in use is remarkable, not only for its duration, 114 years of service so far, but the events that have occurred in that 114 years while the courthouse has been open to the public, almost every Monday and continued through almost every Friday of every week of every year. In 1908, when the building was open for service, the Civil War in the United States had only been over some 43 years. Reunions of actual Civil War veterans were held in the courthouse steps as shown in Grand Army of the Republic photographs made on the steps of the courthouse for several years. The Spanish-American War had been open for only about seven years, and of course, in 1908, names like World War I and World War II would have no meaning or significance and would apply only to future events unanticipated by mankind. Our courthouse in Marshall now is certainly one of the oldest in the state, not the oldest, but it's more than, more than its age now. It's one of the very few, if not the only one, which is still in use in much the same manner as it was in its original form. manner as it was in its original form. There have been only minor changes to the floor plans, there have been no additions, no annexes, we still have only one courtroom, we still have only one entrance and exit, and we only, we still have the original single-pane windows in place. Our courthouse was proposed 115 years ago and put into service 114 years ago, and it has served our county well. No one can say that Madison County has not made good use of the building, but even fine buildings cannot last or remain in use forever. Our 1908 courthouse was designed for a court system that has almost no similarities to the court system in use today. We did not have district courts, or juvenile courts, child support courts, drug courts, or other courts that we have today. In 1908, court personnel, attorneys, and jurors, and parties to cases, and witnesses did not have to drive to Marshall and search for someplace in the town to park. Parking is a critical problem in Marshall with, for the courthouse, with no remedy in sight. We can spend millions of dollars to upgrade our courthouse and make repairs and renovate the building as much as we could, but we will still have the most critical limitations of space for additional courtrooms, offices, security, conference areas, restrooms, and Let me tell you just a little bit about the timeline of the counting that I've touched on already. Our present courthouse has served the county much longer than the county's first courthouse, over twice as long, in fact. And after its first 60 or 70 years in use, however, our courthouse's age was beginning to show. A study commissioned by the state government on our courthouse and other courthouses across the state recommended immediate action on the Madison County courthouse, and those are the words of the study, "Immediate action," in multiple areas, including rewiring, re-insulating, better fire detection systems, and very importantly, the construction of emergency exits. It was also recommended as immediate action that the courthouse annex be constructed to provide for a second courtroom for district court and other courts, and for other needed spaces. Now, that study that I'm citing from, calling for that immediate action, was done in 1978, as you can see at the second item on the chart there. And those immediate recommendations that were believed to be needed for our courthouse in 1978 have almost entirely yet to be done. There have been numerous renovations and repairs done to the courthouse. Other county offices, once located in the courthouse, have been moved to other places, like the tax office, you may recall, and the register of deeds office that used to be in the courthouse. In the 1960s, the courtroom ceiling was lowered to the level of the balcony, and recessed fluorescent lighting fixtures were put in, which was the style of the day. Later, the courtroom was carpeted and renovated in an effort to restore it to its original beauty. And then it had to be re-restored after the courtroom and offices were burned in an arson crime in September of 1998. Major repairs were done at various times, one of which even involved the incredible removal of the entire cupola or dome from the top of the courthouse and its placement on the ground next to the courthouse, so report, repairs could be made inside the roof to keep the cupola from collapsing in the courthouse in March and April 1986. Other studies were done in 2000, and calling for many of the same repairs and renovations called for in 1978, again emphasizing the need for more space. And in 2007, after a threatened legal action under the Americans for Disabilities Act, the courthouse had a ramp constructed to provide a more accessible form of entry, and also an elevator was built for better access to the second floor. In 2010, and 2012, and 13, work was done on the roof and cupola or dome, including painting and support work and foundation work, with a new statue of Lady Justice put in place. Other studies in 2015, and then a recent study and work in 2022 that would just been presented to you, have been done, the study that was done and presented to you by Karen Gravel. In late 2021, as part of the North Carolina State Budget, grants were made by the General Assembly in Raleigh to 16 counties for renovations, repairs, or constructions of new courthouses, ranging from $250,000 to $59 million. Madison County was one of those counties, and we received a grant of $3.8 million. The Madison County Commissioners, at a meeting on February 8th, 2022, established a nine-member, nonpartisan committee, eventually called the Courthouse Renovation Committee, or simply the Courthouse Committee, to determine how our judicial needs could be best served by the state grant. And there were nine individuals appointed to that committee. Commissioner Norris Gentry, Commissioner Michael Garrison, VA Seth Banks, District Judge Larry Leake, Clerk of Court Mark Cody, Clerk staff members Lisa Cody and Kelly Boone, Sheriff Buddy Harwood, or his designee, and me. And our first meeting was March 3rd, 2022, and we've met maybe 16 or 17 times through December so far of 2022. Our first meetings indicated to us what an overwhelming task we had on trying to figure out all the ways the many needs of our old courthouse could be attended to. At that time, our plan was to try to continue to use our courthouse. Ultimately, the committee hired an architectural firm to assist, and that's where Karen Gravel has come in, with her being our main consultant. And the work began on emphasis using our existing courthouse and finding additional areas for additional floor space to use for needed areas, and we considered, as you've been told, neighboring buildings in Marshall. And the ultimate report, which you have heard and which you've been given copies of, shows that there's really simply no way to continue for our existing courthouse to meet our judicial needs. We feel like, as a committee, we have considered and examined every single possibility that could be brought to mind. So, get to the recommendations now. I'll let you read the recommendation. That's the wording, some, a bit wordy wording of our recommendation, but simply put, the committee recommends that Madison County build a new courthouse with a target date of five years. We ask that you, members of the commission, accept our recommendation as a report of the committee, and consider the established purpose of the courthouse committee be considered completed unless you Commissioners have additional tasks for us, and if you do, then we'll gladly try to do that. We further ask the Commissioners proceed to the next step, which we feel is the establishment of a new advisory committee, which could be the same committee as the courthouse committee, or with the replacement of some members or the addition of other members with financial expertise, to begin investigating methods the county could turn to to finance the construction of a new courthouse facility. It might also be helpful to have a committee work towards the overall design features of a new court facility, such as, will a new courthouse be limited to judicial offices or a larger judicial complex housing other county offices as well? Let me stress that all the members of the courthouse committee recommend that we construct a new courthouse. It is a unanimous recommendation. It's a unanimous, nonpartisan recommendation of the nine committees, committee members, from different professions and from different interests. It's also the absolute conclusion of the architectural firm hired, and I think Karen can agree with me on that, that we also, that we do build a new courthouse. It was not the committee's belief at the very beginning that our ultimate recommendation would be to build a new courthouse. We hope that with the grant, that the existing facility could be used. None of us believe that now. We believe the old courthouse can continue to be used as a public building for the county and perhaps for the town of Marshall, just as other counties in our situation have used their old courthouses for public purposes and benefits, perhaps even for another 114 years, but not unfortunately as a courthouse. We believe the grant the county received, the $3.8 million grant, could be put to use to deal with the absolute necessities that our courthouse requires for its continued use while a new courthouse be built. We recognize building a new courthouse will take several years, and that we will have to continue to use our courthouse until the new one is completed. Our 1908 courthouse was designed for a court system that really has almost no similarities to the court system in use today. As I've said, we did not have many of the same types of courts that we do have now, almost on a daily basis. In 1908, court personnel and attorneys and jurors and parties to cases didn't park or have a place that they had to park. Parking is a remedy, or parking is, excuse me, a critical problem with no remedy in sight. Let me just tell you also that I think it's a very exciting time for our county, and I'm excited myself just to be a part of it. I, I don't think anyone who is aware of the needs of our court system can disagree that we do need a new courthouse. I think it's an honor to be a part of this project, and it will be of incredible value to the citizens, citizens of Madison County if we do, in fact, construct a new courthouse. In closing, I want to tell you, just from a personal standpoint, I was a commissioner a few years ago, and I even served with at least one of you, 2012 and 2015, and I know what a difficult job you all have. When I was a commissioner, I really wanted the one thing, I wanted to be able to do something good, really good, for the county. And it's not vanity, I assure you, but I really wanted people to be able to look back on my own tenure as a commissioner and be able to say, or at least have to admit, that something good was done for Madison County while I was one of the five Commissioners. You five now do have that opportunity with the proposal that we're bringing you. You have the ability now to do something that will benefit all the citizens of our county for many years, or for decades, or who knows, maybe another hundred years. No one can really say that we do not need a new courthouse. No one certainly who knows anything about the court system and knows the current condition and situation of our present courthouse. And no matter how much that building might be loved, that 1907 building cannot continue to serve as a courthouse for 2022 and beyond. And the idea of a new courthouse might not be approved by everyone, I know that, and maybe it's that fear of some people being opposed to the construction and the expense of a courthouse and the change that's kept Madison County from having a new courthouse. Look around us, if you will, just think for a moment. Yancey County has a new courthouse and has had one for many decades. Donnie, when was that courthouse built, 1960 something, 60 to 70? 68, all right. That's when they replaced their courthouse. Mitchell County built a brand-new courthouse about 20 years ago. Avery County completely renovated its courthouse and built an annex years ago. Watauga County did. Buncombe County has built an annex. Haywood County is building a new courthouse. Henderson County has. Jackson County has. All the counties around us have built new courthouses around us and across the state, too. We have done actually very little, only what we have had to do to continue to use our building. Temporary fixes, you might call them, for the past 50 years to keep it in operation. We can't keep continuing to do that. We all know that we're not going to wake up one morning and have a new courthouse magically appear. We're going to have to do it, and I argue to you that now is the time for us to act. You all now have the ability to do what we've needed to do for decades, and the ability to do something really, really good for Madison County. Gentlemen, thank you very much for allowing me to serve on the committee, and thank you for listening to us tonight.
All right. I think we accept the committee's recommendations tonight. We thank them for their work. We're not quite done with them yet, so I think we're going to squeeze one more meeting out of you, Judge. And we would like also for former Commissioner Gentry to remain in his role on that committee until that final meeting can take place, and will be some additional direction from us coming in the very near future in regards to that final meeting, Judge. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, do you want to do it now? All right, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Chairman Winkle, I'd like to move that we authorize the, or that we direct the county manager's office to create a plan with a schedule being marked stages and to commence specific steps for the design, funding, construction, and occupancy of a new courthouse within five years, as recommended by the courthouse work group, and that we authorize the interim county manager to see, meet with, and coordinate with any persons and professional service organizations that he deems necessary for the fulfillment of this board's mandate.
Making that in form of motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Garrison, second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any discussion?
I would like to say I, too, served on that, that group, and I think it's imperative to realize that we have Judge Leake and Judge Baker that are here tonight, probably two of the most staunch advocates for saving the courthouse. They've always been very big advocates of renovations and expansion, annexation, to be able to keep that courthouse in function. And this nonpartisan group had a total consensus, not just by our own ideologies, but utilizing professional services, Karen was a huge help, to be able to look at all the options. Most of the people in Marshall, we looked at their buildings, we went, we toured buildings, we looked at the potential, the feasibility of leasing, or buying and renovating. At the end of the, all those meetings, it was a total consensus of the group, and I think everybody that served on that group would agree, that the Madison County courthouse has, has not, and continues to be grossly insufficient and inadequate for the needs of our citizens and for our state and local government. The underwriting theme, the overriding word is, it's just not adequate for our needs anymore. And so I think that's where those recommendations come from. I also wanted, just a point of acknowledgement, I appreciate Mandy volunteering to, to be our clerk and to keep records of those meetings for public review at some point, to see kind of the logic and thought process that we went through over those period of months to try to come up with a viable, affordable, feasible alternative to just building a new So that's my two cents worth.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Go to a vote, all in favor? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Chairman Winkle, I'd like to add just one final thing as part of that courthouse committee before, we, we didn't use the word disband, I believe, but we came up with another one, and I'm sorry what it was, so I'm just going to use, before they disband. I would also move that we task the current courthouse committee with determining the immediate triage renovation needs of safety and the utility of the current courthouse necessary to continue to conduct our routine clerk and court functions while the county pursues a new courthouse facility, and then to bring that recommendation, or those recommendations, back to this board for consideration of expenditure of some of the $3.8 million state fund grant money to address these immediate needs.
You making that in form of a motion?
So move.
Got a motion by Vice Chair Garrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any additional discussion?
Appreciate all those that have worked and served on the boards.
I echo that. Thank you, everybody. Let's go to a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you to that committee. Appreciate your hard work on that, and our architect as well. Thank you. All right, next up is a public hearing by Madison County, I'm sorry, excuse me, Caleb Dispenz, Emergency Management Director. Caleb, you're up. Also, while Caleb's walking up, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that Caleb was recognized by the Land of Sk... by the Land of Sky Council of Governments, along with several other emergency management directors in the area for their excellent work, not only recently, but during pandemic times, and greatly appreciate the good work that Caleb does for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and thank you on behalf of myself and everyone in the background working at 911 Emergency Management, a lot of people behind the scenes that you don't ever see, often don't ever hear, but really work tirelessly 24/7 to really help the citizens when they're in their moment of need. So it's a real team effort, so I appreciate that very much.
Sure.
Tonight, I'm here, though, to talk about our communications project. There's three main aspects to our communications project. There is, number one, the simulcast of this VHF system, that's our repeater system. There's a subscriber radio procurement, that's the radios that your responders have, either portable radios or the mobiles that are in their vehicles, so outfitting them with better quality equipment. And then the third part, which we're going to focus on tonight, is the EOC dispatch system improvement, and what that is, that's our dispatch consoles at our 911 dispatch center. So briefly to go over the first two parts regarding the simulcast project. There we go. EOC staff and the radio committee members are working on the details of the RFP. We've talked about that in previous board meetings. The detailed technical documents requiring FCC licensing, VHF frequency coordination, tower co-location agreements, radio studies, and much more. So we got a lot of work to do on the backend before we can really get the RFP written in a proper way. So that's what we're working on now, as far as the repeater system. Onto the subscriber radio system. We're looking at grant opportunities to see what's out there that can possibly either subsidize or full-out purchase, either small batches or even a large batch of radios, and there's a variety of different grants out there, different requirements for them, but we are looking to try to find some outside money that might outfit either law enforcement or first responders or EMS, or any combination of that. So we're looking into that. We don't have any developments on that right now, but we have that in the pipeline as part of the project. But now to get into the meat of what we're here tonight for. The EOC dispatch system improvement project, Madison County has been awarded the 2023 PSAP grant from the North Carolina 911 Board. That's in the amount of $224,147.61. The grant award letter and the grant agreement are in your packets. The purpose of the grant is to replace our current dispatch consoles with four Motorola MCC 7500E dispatch consoles. Between the grant award funds and Madison County's existing 911 fund balance, the entire equipment cost of $467,637.94 will be covered without any Madison County general fund expenditure. You can see that on that top line there, where it says MCC 7500E system. Between the grant and our existing 911 fund balance, that'll cover 100% of the procurement, installation, training, all of that for the new console system. Now, there will be costs to the general fund for the 24/7 maintenance of the consoles, which we pay for now for our current consoles. There'll be an additional cost to what we currently have, because these are much more capable consoles. And there will also be a cost for a direct fiber link to the High Patrol Viper Corps in Newton, North Carolina. What that'll do is, instead of us using radios to talk on, we're going to use an IP link to talk directly into that statewide radio network. These maintenance and data line costs are approximately $42,000 per year total, of which approximately $28,000 per year will be Madison County's obligation. The remaining $14,000 will be paid with 911 funds. There will be no general funds needed for the console maintenance in the current fiscal year or the next fiscal year. Those begin in year two, which is going to be fiscal year '24, '25. The fiber line installation has approximate nine-month lead time, so the $2,000 installation fee, along with the $12,540 annual connection fee, will begin in fiscal year '23, '24. All pricing information is from the State of North Carolina State Contract 725G for two-way radio communication equipment. So tonight, this evening, gentlemen, I'm asking the board for approval of the grant agreement and to proceed with the fiber contract with the vendor for the fiber contract, which is the MCC quote that you see in there in your packet. The signed grant agreement is due back to the 911 Board on or before January 3, 2023. This is just a little overview of the general project plan. The phase one right now is kind of the grant writing, the planning. Phase two would be, if approved, we'd start the procurement process to order the equipment. Phase three would be receiving the equipment, installation. Phase four, final acceptance, testing. That would include training and cut over and all that. That completes my presentation. Are there any questions, anything I can answer for anyone?
January '23 gives us quite a bit of time to think about this, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's a little short. I apologize. I got, I'm sorry.
For the new commissioners, Caleb, could you, I know there's quite a few on that radio committee, but I don't know that they know who all is on it. Can you kind of?
Yeah, so the radio committee is composed of stakeholders from various agencies in the county that use the radio system. So you have law enforcement from the sheriff's office, from Marshall Police Department. You have fire departments from a variety of the fire departments, dispatch for, we have EMS, Madison medics represented, Madison County 911 members, a lot of people are on, they wear multiple hats. Most of my staff is either a volunteer firefighter and/or works for EMS and/or works for emergency management, so a lot of the people do multiple things. But that's where the radio committee comes from, comes from the people that actually use the radio system in Madison County. And they serve as basically a steering committee for the overall project, as well as each individual part of that, so that we're seeking what we actually need, not just necessarily what one person or one group wants, but what's best for all the responders in the county.
That fiber link to the Highway Patrol, do the other surrounding counties have that same link right now?
Not right now, no. There's other counties that do use that technology, and these consoles, that's why these ones are selected. These are the only consoles available that have that capability to be tied in. All other consoles, you'd have to have a physical radio in your communication center, which is what we use now, and basically hardwired into your consoles, and then it would only be able to use one channel at a time with that radio, whereas this, it's all IP-based, so you'll be able to use one or multiple channels on the Viper system simultaneously.
So will the consoles work without the fiber link to the Highway Patrol?
Yes, they'll work. They're also going to be connected, they're going to be hardwired into our VHF repeater system, our current system right now. So they will work with or without that fiber link, but the fiber link is kind of the key feature to it, because it allows for much more operational capacity as far as how many different talk groups we can use with the consoles. Otherwise, if we wanted to talk on 10 different Viper channels, we'd have to buy 10 different Viper radios and plug them all into the system.
And how much is a Viper radio?
It depends. Mobile radio, anywhere from, I'd say about $2,000, all the way up to, you can go $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 for a single band, and then dual bands starting maybe $6,000 or $7,000 all the way up to about $10,000, $11,000.
So what's the benefit for this fiber link versus what we have now?
What we have now is the MagiCom system, and it's served Madison County well, similar to the courthouse issues. It worked for its time. Now it's old, the company has been bought and sold, and I believe gone through bankruptcy. It's very difficult to find replacement parts for it, and it's very difficult to find qualified technicians that are able to service it. Whereas Motorola is the name brand in public safety radios. This equipment, you can have a vendor locally, you can call a vendor from any state in the nation, they'll be able to work on that equipment, you'll be able to procure replacement parts on it, very much a standard system, whereas our MagiCom system, besides being old and needing replacement, it's hard to even plan for, because even if I wanted to replace certain parts on it, I'll probably have to go get used parts. A lot of other PSAPs that we're using MagiComs are switching to something else, a lot of them switching to Motorola, just because it's the biggest name. There are some other vendors out there for consoles, but basically what they do, other PSAPs, they will offer up their old MagiCom cards and equipment to those who need it, just because it is so hard to find replacement parts. And that's not really the way you want to do critical infrastructure that needs to be 24/7, 365 uptime.
So you're basically scavenging for parts?
Yes.
Essentially. And this, much like our courthouse, as we just learned, this system is pretty much obsolete at this point?
Yes, absolutely.
For the most part. Either is or will be in the immediate future.
Yes, exactly.
What do you expect, life expectancy of this upgrade, how long do you think this will last? How long will this hold us?
They have an equipment, it's called service upgrade, plan of five years. It's not necessarily we have to replace it in five years, but that's when you start looking at replacing it. Realistically, it can last much longer, there's going to be software upgrades on it, it's a modern system, so just depending on what changes there are, it could last much longer than five years. But it will have to be maintained regularly, and that's part of the maintenance cost, is that the software upgrades and hardware upgrades were needed or replacements, all that has a factor in it.
Have any idea how old the system is you have now?
The MagiCom was replaced, I believe, 2016 and 2017, so it's about five, six years old now, and that's about the life cycle for these type of systems. The Motorola system would be similar, I think, but you don't replace every single part of it necessarily. You replace maybe a software upgrade, which is considerably expensive for these type of things. That's most of what you're paying for, is the software. Otherwise, it's basically a computer, it's basically a computer and a monitor, and then a central computer. So it's four computers, one for each of our four dispatch positions, plus something in the back room that kind of controls them all, but it's the software you're paying for.
So the maintenance charged on here, is that considered for parts and labor, or just labor, or software upgrades, or if a screen goes bad, does that count for that, too?
It could. It really depends on what we want to pay for. These are just estimates. Once, if approved and we move forward, we will have a full agreement with the vendor for the system, and it'll detail exactly what we're paying for, what's covered specifically. We actually have one in the works right now that I'll be able to present very quickly if this is approved, that we would then agree with the vendor on what we're purchasing specifically, so we can kind of manage that however we want. But in general, yes, it covers 100% of everything 24/7, just because of the nature of that equipment. If it breaks at 2:00 a.m. on Christmas morning, I need to call someone, they need to be there within an hour, so we can keep our operations running. So it's the whole system, that's just the general standard for public safety equipment at the 911 center level.
And it has broken?
Oh, it's broken many times, and we've had to kind of...
It's nice for you to get somebody out there during holidays.
It depends. The more difficult part than getting someone out there for this system is getting someone that can work on it effectively, because it's a lot of kind of tinkering, almost, I guess you could say, where even, we've tried different technicians, different vendors, even ones from Tennessee we had come in to try to see if they could work on it better, and even them, they said, we got to bring stuff back to our shop and figure it out. Ended up, myself and some of our telecommunications were just working through it, and we were able to solve that problem that we had them come out for, which saved us some money. But it's not a really good long-term strategy for us to have this critical infrastructure for not having qualified technicians, whether or not they can respond quickly, they can't fix it, even if they respond, even if they're right there, often, they can't fix it, and even if they knew it's broke, they can't always get the parts right away.
So for the record, you're not asking us to sign a contract tonight, you're just asking for permission to move forward with obtaining and seeking out a contract?
I'm asking for permission to sign the 911 grant agreement
Right.
from the 911 Board, and what that outlines is, they are giving us $224,000 towards these consoles. Now, the grant agreement has all the details about how they're giving us the money and what's required of us to hold a bar into the bargain, but it's not, there's no obligation to the county tonight as far as the grant agreement. If we end up saying, oh, it turns out we don't want to do this, or something doesn't work out, there's no obligation, it's just basically the state wouldn't give us the money. We'd have, to get the money, the details of the grant agreement show, we have to say what part of the project is complete, how much that part costs, and this is the part of the money we want from the grant to pay for that part of the project, basically. Basically, need the invoice to get the grant money. The fiber link, there would be an obligation there because of the lead time, and that's why I'm asking for that as well, because I can't wait until the consoles are in, because it's going to be about nine months after that, from whenever we tell the vendor, "Go", to when it's actually installed. So there'll be that $2,000 installation fee, and then after that, there'll be that $15,540 annual fee for that direct link.
Caleb, number one is, I commend you for seeking out and acquiring that funding, that grant funding, you know, it has matched to almost 50% of the funding for that console upgrade, and it comes from grants that you sought through, that's, I commend you for doing that. And number two, is it pretty fair to say that even some of the previous service contractors are no longer available, even?
Absolutely.
Historically worked on that system and tinkered with it?
Correct.
They're not even available now to tinker, so...
That's correct.
The ones that are, don't have necessarily the repair parts to even continue to mandate some of it without utilizing used console parts.
Correct.
Just a point of clarity, in your fiber link, that's going to be a new additional $12,540 fee each year
Correct.
that the county will incur, on top of a new additional fee for console, the maintenance console agreement, which will be $15,000 beginning in 2024.
Correct.
So in essence, what we're considering as a board is an increase of your operating budget by $27,540.
That's correct.
Okay. Will there be any of the 911 funds that'll be utilized for that, or is that something that we're just going to be considering as coming out of our fund balance each year?
Not out of that portion. The maintenance is approximately $30,000 a year over a five-year period. 911 funds pay for approximately half of that, and the county's general fund will have to cover the other half of that, so...
All right. Just to clarify, though, you don't need, you won't need a budget amendment for this current fiscal year at all. You will need, you'll need to bake that into your budgets in the future.
The plan is to have a budget amendment later on. Carrie Lepper and I prepared one to put the grant funds in, and any county money that's needed for this fiscal year, and then also would carry over into the next fiscal year, just because the main issue we were going to run into is lead times on the hardware, how long it takes Motorola to ship it and install it. If they can get it done this fiscal year, that's great, but more than likely, it's going to run into July and pass that before we actually get it. So there's an amendment, so we can put that money in there, but we're not going to actually spend any money until we actually have the contracts with the vendors, Motorola as well as the fiber vendor, signed and agreed upon and so forth. The only thing that needs to be signed right now is the agreement with the 911 Board for the grant.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you've got this grant, and it's in a form that I think is in your budget, you will need a specific, take specific action to approve that and authorize that to be signed. Once that goes back, then Carrie will bring before you, in a couple of months, a reimbursement resolution that you will need to adopt, because we will have to pay out of general fund the monies to purchase these items. And then we send in the paper receipts to the 911 Board, and they reimburse us out of the grant. So Carrie will set all of this up in a, we've done those in a grant fund ordinance, so all the monies can run in and out with that ordinance.
And I assume you've reviewed the grant agreement at this time?
We've reviewed the grant agreement. And Caleb and Carrie have been talking under these 911 grants. There are a ton of reporting requirements that your finance office will have to send down to E911. These grants are monitored more than most grants, and there actually has to be monthly reports that are sent in, and those forms are attached to the grant agreement. So there just needs to be coordination between Caleb and Carrie so that those reports, and I think, I'll ask Carrie, you've already seen that grant ordinance, you know what the reporting requirements will be?
Yes, and in their packets for part of mine, Donnie, is the grant project ordinance.
So you've got the grant project ordinance in the package, and that will need to be approved also.
Will we also be approving, or you present, requesting we approve the contract for the fiber link to SHP?
I don't need anything signed for that, I just need approval to tell the vendor that, yes, we would like to move forward and to get the ball rolling.
I know you said there was a timeline issue.
Yeah, there's a nine-month lead time on that, so if we say yes tomorrow, it's going to be, you know, maybe August or so, before they're actually doing the work.
Any other questions for Caleb?
Good information. Appreciate it. It's good to see you's moving forward.
All right. At this point, we need, if so desired, we need a motion for the approval of the grant agreement?
I may we approve the NC 911 23 grant agreement?
Motion by Commissioner Wyatt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Go to a vote, all in favor? Hearing none, go to a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous approval, thank you gentlemen, thank you Caleb.
Thank you gentlemen.
Um, gentlemen, do we want to go ahead and authorize the approval for the fiber link? If so, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I so moved.
Got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you Caleb, is that everything you needed?
Yes, sir, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Sir, appreciate your time. All right, up next on our agenda is our public hearing for the Madison County Transportation Authority grant funding. And first up will be a presentation by our Director of Transportation Operations Director, Daniel Metcalf. Daniel, you've got the floor, brother.
Good evening. It's that time of year for the Madison County Transportation Authority to submit state grants, uh, once again. We do have three grants that we would like permission to submit. The first is fifty-three eleven administrative grant as well as a fifty-three eleven capital grant. And then an additional fifty-three ten rural enhanced mobility for seniors and those individuals with disabilities. The administrative grant, the state tells us how much we are eligible for. And that total is one thirty-four, five seventy-two. This is a matched grant, federal funds would be one hundred and two thousand, six hundred fifty-seven and sixty cents. The state's part is six thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight and sixty cents. And the local match would be twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five and eighty cents. The capital grant, which is for any capital projects, usually we, um, replace any vans that are eligible using that grant. This year, we do not have any vans eligible for the twenty twenty-four capital or fiscal year. So we are asking in the grant for, um, propane conversion kits for our vans. So we're asking for ten of those, uh, kits to convert to where we, they can be dual fuel, they can be gasoline and propane. The total for that grant would be sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty. The federal portion is fifty-nine thousand, one twenty-six. The state is three thousand, four seventy-eight and our local match would be six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six. That's something we've looked at for the two years that I've been here is trying to get, uh, looking at propane. Uh, fuel for our vans, especially since the cost of gasoline went up so much.
Does that cost, um, best I can recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, that cost includes the infrastructure required to operate those as well? That's the loading tank and everything at your department, correct?
Um, actually, we may be looking at, they may just provide a place on the bypass, they're looking at setting up a station, so. Um, given, I think there was some discussion using the property back behind the, uh, transportation authority for different uses, so. The Alliance Auto Gas is looking at setting up a station anyway. So we would just have our slide cards or our codes that we would type in to fuel there. Uh, the third grant is the enhanced mobility grant, that would be to serve the Marshall two eight seven five three zip code. Uh, to provide rides for those seniors sixty and older and those with, uh, disabilities. That would free up funds that we currently use to provide rides and we can use those, uh, and hopefully increase our ridership. Uh, that grant is written for sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five with a federal portion being thirty-two thousand, seven ninety-three and fifty cents. There is no state match there and our local match for that would be the thirty-two, seven ninety-three and fifty cents.
Can you clearly state that figure one more time?
On the, on the last one?
Yeah.
That would be, um, a.
The local grant match especially.
Thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three. And fifty cents.
Is that already in the budget, Dan?
Uh, this would be built into next year's budget, this is for the F Y twenty-four.
Anybody have any?
I've got a question about the, uh, the propane, why are we doing propane? I mean propane ain't cheap neither.
It's a cleaner fuel, it's a cleaner fuel, uh, and it is a little bit less than gasoline.
Well, how many miles per gallon are we going to get with, I mean, if you look at studies, how much vans?
Yeah, it's fairly, fairly close. The state, state and federal governments, you know, pushing a lot of electric, but I'm not sold on electric. I don't think that will do very well going to Spring Creek, over Hot Springs Mountain and on.
Might get you there, might not get you home though.
Yeah, there's no charging stations.
So, so you think it's going to save the county money in the long run?
Eventually, yeah.
Okay, what about working on these? If something was to happen, do we got mechanics that, around here that can work on or we have to call in somebody or?
Yeah, well, it'll, it'll be the same, same engine, yeah. And it's a cleaner burning fuel, so their information says that there's fewer problems.
And ten, ten of them, is that all the vans you have?
That's the, the vans that we see that would be, that it would pay for itself. Cause some of those are, um, older, one's a minivan and they do not fit minivans. So we're just trying to get the miles up on that one to get rid of it eventually.
Another question is, so if the van gets too many miles and we replace it with a new one, can you take this conversion off? And take it off the old one and put it on the new one?
Normally what we do with the vans, once they're no longer, once they're replaced with us, then we, the county places that van in another department. So that savings hopefully would continue and you can see those white vans in other departments. And then in a replacement.
It could go to, you know, go anywhere.
And then in, uh, as we replace the vans, we would have that written into the grants where we replace them.
Then just a couple of things, one is, I feel tested law enforcement vehicles with propane, you can't tell any difference in them, you wouldn't know until you go fill it up. That's, uh, that case, so, so pretty comparable as far as operational capacity. Um, the, just going through these and looking at them, the administrative grant, that is a non-recurring expense. That twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollar local meet, Madison match, fifteen percent match. That's just, that's an annual, you reapply for that every year. The next one down, uh, the capital grant is going to be what we're talking about as far as the speed vehicle goes. That is a one-time. No way.
That's an annual.
Yes, the capital is an annual and that's a reoccurring, is that something we're already doing?
Yes, we have, uh, so this past year we replaced, I think, um, one van. Of course, those are behind schedule because of being able to get the, uh, vehicles. And then we also replaced the flooring, uh, replaced the carpet in the transportation building.
And so the capital grant is specifically for the retrofit of the vehicles?
Yeah, that's what we're asking for.
And that is six thousand, that's a one-time six thousand match, next year it'll be of the same process. Uh, and the following was a rural enhanced mobility grant, that's to increase riders' availability and services for those folks. That thirty-two thousand is a fifty percent match, is that something?
That's, that's something new, we've not applied or we've not been awarded this grant before.
Okay, and that's a, a grant that would, uh, be a twenty twenty-four, I believe you said.
Yes.
We'd have to look at funding that in twenty twenty-four. Uh, any anticipation as far as funding for that one particularly?
For the thirty-two thousand?
Are you going to try to seek additional grant funding for that?
So we can use some funds, there's cer- certain funds that we get from the state that we can use as, as a, as a match. We currently use some of those funds as a match for the Land of Sky grant that we have operating in the MPO with the Mars Hill area.
Very good, thank you. As far as overall effect on your budget from this fiscal year to your next fiscal year, what, what do you anticipate not being able to get covered by additional sources? Have you thought that out yet?
It, it should be pretty close.
To what we've.
To what we, we've been, yeah.
Very good, nonspecific answer.
Yeah.
School taught you well.
Yes.
All right, so at this point, we typically would open this up for public comment, um, however, no one signed up for public comment on this matter. So, uh, we'll continue with our discussion at this point. Yeah, I guess, the, the, I mean, is there any member of the public out there that would like to comment on this specific topic?
I'm sorry, when I saw the signup sheets, I didn't see any specific topics on the public comment.
Do you want to talk about it, Jim?
What are we talking about?
I think, just for, just for point of record, uh, Donnie, under these particular ones, they have the ability, whether they've signed up or not, to still speak. So if you're not on the list and you want to make comments that are specific to this particular, uh, request, then you can do that. You get thirty seconds.
I'm just kidding, I'm thirty seconds.
Good.
You're good, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I'm just wondering, uh, what is involved in setting up a charging station? Oh, sorry.
You gotta come up and talk to the microphone or everybody else, I can't hear you.
I just have a real quick question about what is involved in, in setting up a charging station?
Propane station?
No, well, no, actually, because you mentioned that electric vehicles are not feasible. Because, at least I heard, because there are no charging stations really accessible out of Hot Springs. And so what is involved in setting up a charging, in establishing a charging station, that's all I'm wondering.
Essentially, someone would have to take ownership of that. Um, like, for example, French Broad Electric or somebody like that would have to take ownership of, of that, uh, actual station. Whether it be leasing a piece of land from somebody where they would locate a station. Um, there are grant opportunities out there, uh, that the county is always looking at. Um, a lot of it really though is, is structured for the main interstates right now.
Uh huh.
They're not, they haven't put a tremendous amount of focus on what we would consider the backroads of Madison County. So, uh, there is, for example, a charging station at the Mars Hill, uh, visitor center. Um, yeah, so actually, I think it's two, I think you can do two cars at a time there if I'm not mistaken. Um, but that's, uh, but of course that's right off I twenty-six, and that's why that's an appealing location.
Okay, I, I get the picture, yeah, thank you.
Very good, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Uh, how about going over that again about the rural enhanced mobility for seniors and individuals that you want this thirty-two thousand for?
Okay, so, um. We're asking for the sixty-five?
Comment right now, is there any, any additional public comment before we move on to our discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move on and Bill, you don't, I think you still remember his question, don't you, Jim? All right, go ahead.
So this is similar to the Land of Sky, Sky Grant that we have right now, um, which is a fifty-fifty grant, which is also enhanced mobility. Uh, for seniors and disabled. So, um, we, we looked at how many rides we had done with the, within the Marshall, uh, two eight seven five three zip code. And anticipated how many seniors and those with disabilities that would ride in a given year. So, and looked at our cost per trip or cost per ride, uh, given our op stats report that we did at the end of last fiscal year. So that's how we ended up, uh, calculating the total of sixty-five thousand and then the fifty-fifty would be half the federal money and then we would match.
What do you have to do to allow professional to ride?
Just advertise and, and increase, right now we have, we have denials. So we have people who call and need a ride or need transportation and we're already booked with the number of drivers that we have on the road at that time.
Do you need your sexy money at this time?
To, to provide more rides, we would, yes.
You don't have rides, is that right?
Yeah, we, we've got people who want to ride, but we don't have the space or the, the driver to go pick them up.
And now I know you, you have reached out and actually solicited and obtained other contractual agreements to provide rider services for insurance companies. And I know that you work with some of the Roman County government entities to provide riders, uh, with transportation, so. I appreciate those efforts. Uh, one question, it seems like everything, the only point of concern is, is the. Vehicles being retrofitted, uh, what is the deadline on us making a decision on that? Is it possible to bring back maybe some statistical data, not just it, it's more environmentally? Uh, but also the relationship on, on maintenance and then the relationship to what it costs per mile to operate a propane vehicle?
Yes. We can do that, you want to do that next month or?
It'd be awesome, I think it should provide the board just a little bit more information on that, uh, so we can move forward. That'd be my, my suggestion.
Is it thirty-two thousand?
No, pardon. Yeah, no, that, that's, these are three separate grants, I'm just speaking specifically to the five-three-one-one capital grant. Mr. Uh, Chair, I'd make a, I'd move that we table five-three-one-one capital grant. Till next, uh, till the January meeting with the understanding that. Director's going to bring us additional information regarding those vehicles and the data that supports them.
Will that give you enough time to?
Uh, we, we, we need to get the application sent in, um, this week.
So it is time sensitive then?
The state's behind because of pricing of vans and all of that, so.
So we do have a time.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it is time sensitive.
No, I just.
I'll ever send my move, my motion.
You presented your motion?
Yeah. Kill it one way or the other.
And if the, the board decided later not to go that route, uh, then we can not accept the grant funding.
What's it do along the side of the grant?
This, they're all three this week.
So you got to apply for them this week. If you have time to discuss it.
Yeah, we can turn that.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve and seek out the administrative grant of hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh, with understanding that the county has fifteen percent match of twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
So that's to, just to clarify, that's the fifty-three eleven administrative grant?
That's correct.
Okay, you're making that in form of motion?
Uh, so move, second.
So we've got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, second by Commissioner Hensley, any additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll move it to a vote, all in favor? That was unanimous. Next up is the fifty-three ten, I'm sorry, whoop, let me back up. Uh, fifty-three eleven capital grant is next up. That would be the one that requires, uh, just under seven thousand dollar local match. And that is to retrofit the units with the propane capability, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Make sure I had it straight.
You made a statement earlier, if you could just clarify that again, if the county were to pursue this grant and were awarded this grant, that could always.
Not spend it, yeah.
Can't use it for anything else, but you, you would essentially turn the grant back in.
Yeah, return it.
Next, can you use any of these, Donnie?
They are, they affect, all three of them, if they're no. They approved the grants now, buried mine for different purposes for the capital grant. We did have a, a van that was replaced.
That's what I was wondering, do they actually utilize any propane vehicles?
I said I'm aware, not in this site.
The propane thing, and I'm just chiming in here because it's one of the boards I serve on. Um, the propane thing is, is something that the state has been pushing, uh, in, in the efforts to be more environmentally friendly. And that's why they're, that's why they're offering up these grants in order to try to, uh, make it more equitable for counties participating program. Well, that's fair enough to say.
Yes, and we had, we had actually applied for, uh, federal grants with other transit systems in the state, uh, last year. But that group, we were not funded, we were put in with, um, I think Henderson. we were not funded. We were put in with, I think Henderson County and a few others, Lenore. But there was only one program in the whole state that was funded with that federal grant, but.
Right. So in some cases, like in Buckland County, they chose to buy $500,000 electric buses.
That's, yeah.
Is that Asheville City?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Asheville City, yeah.
And if you notice, when they go, they put those buses on the flat routes, and when you have to go up a hill, they slow way down.
Yeah, those buses, I don't, I don't think they've gotten quite the bang for the buck out of those buses yet. Technology's still not there. Better Asheville's money than ours, though, so. All right, so the capital grant, 5311 capital grant is what is currently up for discussion. Any additional discussion, gentlemen? They hear a motion, he's proceeding, pursuing this grant?
I so moved.
A motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Say it.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, move it to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous?
Be excited to see how this works. It's minimal investment for opportunity to keep clean air in the county, so just keep us up to speed on it as, as you implement it. Be interesting to see.
And then our final grant that Daniel's proposing for us here tonight is the 5310, the Rural Enhancement Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities. This is, again, just to reiterate, a program that's currently being operated in Mars Hill, but this will give the ability to expand to serve the residents of Marshall.
It's a sim, yeah, similar to the grant in Mars Hill.
Maybe not exactly.
Yeah.
Pretty close, pretty doggone close. All right, so seeking a motion for that, if anybody's interested, guys. Feel like I'm doing a sales job here.
I'd like a move.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Hensley?
Say it.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any additional discussion?
A huge and valuable resource. This and all the services your staff provide for our county is absolutely great.
Guys do a great job.
I assume you'll need to add another driver for this, correct?
Uh, hopefully.
Yeah, all right.
At least part-time.
All right, good deal. All right, so any additional discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous once again. Didn't get all three at once, but you got them all three piece by piece there, brother. All right.
You should just slide in and out. We wanted to, wanted to see you on the hot seat for a minute.
I feel like I'm back in school system.
Thank you, Daniel.
You know they didn't ask those kind of questions.
We appreciate your leadership.
Thank you, Danny.
And I think we have the Motive Care.
Do we have one more? I'm sorry, what do we have?
Yeah, so we have an addendum to our agreement with Motive Care, which is one of our brokers that Mr. Garrison mentioned. So they, they have the addendum, I think you have that in your packet, that they will not.
I'm seven on the agenda, I apologize.
They will not deal with paper billing, which we have not done any paper billing with them at all. Our software, CTS, speaks directly to them, and Kathy does a great job getting our money back, so. We already do this, but they, they deal with several different transportation providers, and they're doing this across the board to where that they only do electronic billing.
And Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed that addendum. It is appropriate as a full.
All right, we need to put our standard clause in there at all or anything, we're good to go?
There's some provision in there that, that disagrees with it.
Can I back up just one second? Do we need to bid out the capital fund for the vehicle, for the for Blossom to do the work? We're good with 69,000 expenditure on that capital?
It's a state, that's a state contract.
That's my share, thank you.
So back to the how do you pronounce that, mob?
Motive Care.
Motive Care, okay.
That's the way we say it.
All right, that's cool. It's not how it's spelled, but that's all right, it works for me. So the Motive Care Transportation Solutions Agreement Addendum, need a motion to authorize, assume me or the county manager sign that? Doesn't matter, we'll figure it out. All right.
You can authorize your chairman to sign. Just, just put it in that motion, that's we split it at that point.
All right. So looking for a motion that we authorize the agreement, authorize me to sign the agreement?
I like the motion.
Now, a motion by Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Garrison. Any additional discussion? Move to a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
All right, now we're done, Dan. Thank you, brother. Mandy, you have that agreement, I assume?
Yeah.
All right, next up. Developmental Services Director Brad Guth. Come on up, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I have a couple items tonight. The first one is the recommendation from the Economic Development Board for Development Site Eight, number eight. At its December first meeting, the Madison County Economic Development Board voted to recommend to the commissioners that we move forward with preparation of engineering and site development work for Economic Development Site Eight. The Board of Commissioners, in conjunction with the Economic Development Board, hired an economic development consulting firm, Sanford-Holzhouser, to do a site identification survey for us. And we completed that, and they identified eight sites in the county. And then we hired an engineer, once that study was done, to identify a concept plan or develop a concept plan for Site Number Eight. And Site Number Eight is the site that the county controls, it owns, it's off of Long Branch Road, and we're recommending that you all approve that concept plan and then authorize staff and the Economic Development Board to move forward with pursuing grants in aid to fully develop and market Site Number Eight. And in your packet, you can look at figure number three, and it actually has the concept plan there that we're looking at. There are four buildings there, ranging from 40 to 85,000 square feet apiece, and for a total of 271,000 square feet. Are there any questions or concerns?
Just clarification for the public, you could potentially put four building sites on that industrial site.
Correct, correct.
Economic development site, correct?
Yes, sir. And that's what our.
I also note that we do have Forrest Gilliam with us tonight, he's Vice Chair of the Economic Development Board. Forrest, is there anything you would like to add to that?
While he's coming forward, just a, a brief backdrop, so everyone's aware. The county contracted or authorized the Economic Development Board to contract with the company, engineering company, to identify eight potential sites for industrial development accounting for economic development endeavors. Those sites are confidential, they're not, it's not for public information, or they have not been. They brought back some of those sites, one of them being a site that's on Long Branch Road, it's county-owned property between Long Branch Road that goes up towards Nursing Home, and so now that information is being brought to public light, and the Economic Development Board has already had some preliminary expenditures to do a basic rough draft. If, if you took this land, how many buildings could you stick on it? And what kind of grade work would have to be done? And so they presented that to the board, and then the recommendation is, is continue to move forward with that site identification. With the idea of being that we have the opportunity to create an economic development endeavors and also to channel where those endeavors take place as far as commercial businesses, so.
Forrest? I think Brad has covered it well, and you've supplemented it well, the discussion that has gone on there. We've been working for about a year and a half as a board prioritizing identifying industrial sites. That gives Brad something when he is talking to companies, they need a location. And we see that in counties around us, we've seen it throughout our history as a county. And we're asking that we be able to continue this due diligence process. We may find things that make it not work, but that we continue forward with that process and also seek some funding to assist with developing that site from outside of here. Really some good opportunities here to help keep people who live in Madison County working in Madison County. As we know, we're bleeding money out all the time because so many have to drive out to work. This will eventually, if it, if it works out, really help expand our economic base here and give more opportunities for people who are growing up here now to know that they have a future in Madison County, which is we all love this place, but sometimes it's been hard to see that just from an economic standpoint, if you're from here. So appreciate y'all's consideration.
Mr. Chair, based on the prior site, the funding and the, the work of the Economic Development Board, which, by the way, for the public, most of it's folks that volunteer their own personal time to serve on it, but based on the prior site identification for the Long Branch site, the preliminary analysis that was conducted and the preliminary engineering assessment that we've all reviewed, I move that we authorize the Economic Development Board to pursue additional in-depth site planning and site development with logistics and also potential site development funding opportunities for the Long Branch property. Identified, I believe you said, is it Site Eight?
Yes, sir.
That's my move.
Making that in form of motion?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Say it.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any addition, any discussion at this time? Hearing none, go forward with the vote. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
Next is the, we're going to continue with Brad for the Commercial Assembly Moratorium Discussion. Once you got Forrest on that, Brad.
Yes, sir. As you all may know, we have been working on noise ordinance as well as land use updates, as well as a special event permit to address the assembly uses in the county. And we have come to the end of that moratorium. We've been working for six months now, and the next item on our agenda is going to be talking about the noise ordinance, which is one of the products that came out of that work group. Commissioner Garrison was on that work group, as well as Madam Clerk Mandy, as well as former Commissioner Craig Goforth, and then myself, and then a former planning administrator, Terry Dolan. So we've been working very diligently on getting those items approved, and we need to have a little extra time. We're proposing that it be about four months, that's the recommendation from the group. And we have to have a public hearing and a special meeting for that to happen, so I think we're looking at doing that. I recommend doing that on the 28th of December, which is in two, two weeks.
That would be a public hearing to discuss the, a, an extension of the moratorium.
Correct.
Proper way to phrase that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Turner, we need that in the form of a motion.
I do not think that you need that in the form of the motion, because you will schedule a public hearing. I believe Mr. Norwood will be here at that time. And Madam Clerk, the notice of that, or that special meeting public comment has already been sent out separately.
It will be sent to the paper.
It will be sent to properly notice to make. I do not think you need to take any formal action.
And just so people can save the date, that'll be December 28th, I believe, at 6:00 PM, is that correct, Mandy? Right? So we will have a special meeting to, to discuss that specific topic. And that will be, as far as I know, a one-topic meeting only, will be to, to deal with this moratorium potential extension on the moratorium. And that will be December 28th, 6:00 PM, here, right here. All right. Continuing on, Brad, we've got the proposed amendments to the county noise ordinance.
Yes, sir, you all have in your packet the noise ordinance, or a draft copy of that noise ordinance that the work group has developed over the past six months, and we wanted to give you the opportunity to see that. We are in the process of hiring a consultant to review that ordinance and to give us some feedback on the actual decibel levels and the frequency, and we've shared it with a consultant already, and he's given us kudos on the, the, the majority of the, the document. And we're just going to look at some specific things, like the decimals in, in that ordinance. You know, we're not page numbers, but in your ordinance there, the frequencies are listed as to be determined, and then there are some placeholders there for the decimals that may stay the same, or they may change based on the consultant's feedback, so. Thank you, sir.
And just a point of note, for us as a county, we apologize, there may have been dissemination of information without the backdrop to it. The numbers that, for those of you who have saw the draft of the noise ordinance, you saw it before the commissioners did, and those numbers are simply arbitrary placeholders. They have no bearing at this point on what the final analysis of the numbers will be. They simply were numbers that we injected into the ordinance so that we would have them there as a point of reference, knowing all along that the last thing we would do would be to actually develop what we deem with the use of experts as the appropriate decimal levels, so. We've received a lot of feedback on that, and I appreciate the feedback. It's useful to know that some people went out and even did experiments themselves and, and found that some of these numbers may, may or may not be sufficient, so. Just know that this process, along with the special use permit moratorium process, will afford the public opportunity to have input at the appropriate time to review the final draft, as the board has made any additions or corrections to it. And then at that point, the public will have opportunity to provide an oversight of all the finished work and to provide through a public hearing, feedback as to things that they would recommend or suggest, or things they don't like or or do like as far as the ordinance and as far as the special use permit. So Brad, you might want to just kind of give them a little tentative timeline on how to expect that for the noise ordinance.
Yeah, the, the noise ordinance, we're looking at having that review done in January, and then the meeting in February is when the public hearing will be, which is the first weekend in February, is that correct, Mandy? So it's a little earlier than normal, but that's kind of the timeline that we're looking for. So at the next meeting, you all would have a, so the public hearing for February meeting.
All right. So at this point, this has just been for informational purposes. You guys have any additional questions? Very good, I think we're done, Brad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good work on that working group as well. Appreciate all their dedication and time. They meet every week and hash and argue and haggle and try to do the research to develop a, a good ordinance for our county, so appreciate all the work on it. I know it's been labor-intensive, even the background in the research for it, and so. Brad, appreciate you taking a leadership role in not only this part of it, but also with Terry Dolan being now his slots vacant, you're taking on some extra, extra responsibilities to facilitate that, so appreciate it.
All right, next up on the agenda is Tammy Cody, our Health Director, and she is going to be presenting the 2022 Child Family Prevention Team's annual report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, noon. I'm well, thank you. Before I get started, I wanted to share that we have the three new commissioners. Our office is always open, so I'm here to share information. This one is actually required to be shared, but I'm always excited to share about public health, things we have going on, as well as needs in our community. And there has been a clear misunderstanding somewhere tonight, and I think it's best that I clear it up, that with having three new commissioners, you weren't involved in our budget. But at the Health Department last year, there was not a deficit. There was, in fact, we were able to reduce the need from the community by close to half a million dollars. So there was not a deficit at the Health Department, and miscommunication's never helpful. So just wanted to clear that up for you. So, thank you. So I'm here tonight to share with you the annual report for the Child Fatality Task Team. I chair that committee, and we're mandated to give you a report every year, and we're mandated to review the deaths of any children in our county under the age of 18. And we take that very seriously. We have a fairly large team, and our responsibility is to ensure if something went wrong, that we don't have a repeat of that for any child in our county. And so this past year, we had three deaths. It takes about a year for the state to get everything together and get back to us, so these don't happen in what I would consider necessarily a timely fashion, but that may be good for small communities when we're hurting for these families that have lost children. So this past year, we had three deaths that we reviewed. Tragically, the first one was a birth defect from a heart disorder. We could not find any system failures in that case. It was just unfortunate. The second case, we held over for two meetings. This was an infant that died at three weeks of age, and we did find a possibility of improving the coordination of care. The mother was being seen with several medical providers, and we're not sure all information was being shared as freely as it should have been. And so we're putting some things in place to try to improve that. The newborn was sleeping in bed with the mother, and we decided it would be a good opportunity for us to work on a safe sleep campaign again. And on that committee, we have Smart Start and DSS, and so they're helping us with this campaign. And at the Health Department, we do have donations that we receive for safe sleep options, such as bassinets, if folks can't afford those. So we're going to work on doing that. And in this case, it was very tragic. We are mandated, and we do have SIDS grief counselors that are trained. We were not ever notified that this death occurred, and so we failed this resident by not reaching out to them, not that we chose to, we just weren't informed of that. There seemed to have been some confusion, or it wasn't consistent with the medical examiner here in Asheville and at Wake Forest where the autopsy was performed. So we have passed that on to the state to see if they can help ensure any time that there's even a slight possibility, we want to reach out to our residents and offer our Then the last case was a three-year-old child that passed away from a terminal illness. There was no system failure that was identified in that case, another just very unfortunate and sad situation. We have several accomplishments with this team of turning in surveys, participating in Child Abuse Prevention Months and Activities. We appreciate all of the members in our community that sit on this team. We do have some vacancies, and so maybe I'll get those to our chair and see if we can help fill those. There's not a requirement for a commissioner on this committee, but I will share the openings that we have, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on this report. Or again, my door is always open in the services that we provide. I'd welcome an opportunity to share, answer questions with any of you.
Anyone have any questions for Tam?
I've said one, Tam. Is there any check and balance to ensure that your staff at the Health Department are notified of the infant deaths?
Normally, most of our residents do go to Mission Hospital, and there is a system that's in place, and we don't know why it failed. We think it was because the medical examiner there classified this death instead of as a SIDS death. And then at Wake, it was classified, but it does appear to be a SIDS death. And so that was a system failure that should not have happened, and the state will assist us with looking at the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Tam.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Have a good night. All right, up next on our agenda is Ross Young, Grant Manager, and he's got Local Assistance and Tribal Assistant Fund Grant Project Ordinance. Sounds exciting.
It's always exciting. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have the honor of serving Madison County by working on about a dozen different projects. The one I'm most noted for is the ARPA Funds, American Rescue Plan Fund Act. And this grant ordinance that you have in front of you is connected to that, and this is how. Madison County is a county that has a lot of federal land in it. And because we have federal lands of, I don't know how many acres, it's a lot of acres, we get a percentage of federal funding to kind of compensate for lost revenue because we can't use that land for other things. There's a program called the LATCF, is what we call it, that's Local Tribal Inconsistency Fund, and that is the program that helps counties get money annually to offset these things. As part of the ARPA grant, this same group looked back and said, wait a minute, y'all need some more money from that, too. So we have the opportunity, I've already asked for it, and it's headed this way, it may already be here, part of it, $346,984.04 of additional ARPA money is going to be coming to Madison County. And what's in front of you is the mechanism for making that work, which is a grant project ordinance, which allows a special fund to be set up for those grant funds to be put into. So with that, it is, I'm asking you for a vote, to vote on this grant project ordinance for these funds.
Ross, I do see our Finance Director shaking her head up and down when you say some of the funds have already been received, so it sounds like definitely time for that. Mr. Chair, I move that we go forward with the grant project ordinance, establishment of the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund.
So we have a motion by Vice Chair Garrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Chairman? A second by Commissioner Hensley. Any additional discussion?
And this money just goes into the general fund? Is that correct?
Still has the same ARPA restrictions that the other money would have, or not?
It has very little ARPA restrictions. If you'll notice, it's in a line item that can be changed. We can change the grant project ordinance anytime you want to. It is in a capital outlay right now, which gives you a lot of latitude within that line item. But again, if you needed to change it, you can. The only restrictions on that one is basically you can't pay for lobbying. That's about the only restriction you got.
Fair enough. I guess Kerry could, I think I already asked Kerry this before, this money does have to be washed.
It does not.
Because it's, they may be able to use it for other things.
Any additional questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, good move to a vote. All in favor?
If I may, on that same topic, with the same money, the ARPA money, we have the privilege of having the assistance of an individual I'd like to introduce to you. I could, Matthew Wilson?
Come up.
Matthew Wilson comes to us from ARPA-funded money that we never received, but the money goes to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to pay for individuals like Matthew to come help us do projects. So Matthew wanted to say a few words and just introduce himself to you.
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, Commissioners. I've had a chance to meet with several of you already, Mr. Honeycutt, but for those I haven't had a chance to meet, my name is Matthew Wilson. I work for the Association of County Commissioners, originally from Macon County. I live over in South Asheville currently, that place where the folks drive all those fancy electric buses you were discussing earlier. And before that, I was an MPA grad from Western Carolina and where I did my undergrad at Cullowhee. And I say all that just to, that's what I lead with when I'm meeting with folks here. Instead of those eight dreaded words I think people are thinking when I'm meeting with them, I'm from Raleigh and I'm here to help. That's not what this is. I'm here to help, but I'm not from Raleigh. And so as Ross mentioned, my primary responsibilities here are to assist y'all with ARPA opioid settlement funds, ensuring that compliance requirements at the state and federal level, that Madison County is above board in those regards, as well as helping staff with any reporting obligations that any of those requirements may have. So I'm very excited to have a chance to be here with Madison County. Y'all have a lot of challenges, but a lot of opportunity as well, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Glad to have you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, my first task, I want to know who 2.0 is, who's behind me.
We'll work on that.
Thanks, Ross.
Thank you, Ross. Thank you, Matthew. Won't hold the fact that you went to Western against you, I promise. All right. Moving up, moving down the agenda here, I guess, is up next is Brooke with our Human Resources Director and our Comprehensive Classification and Pay Study Proposal.
So as requested, I am here presenting a proposal for a comprehensive classification and pay study. The proposal is from the MAPS Group, which has also conducted studies for several different surrounding counties. The cost of the proposal is $27,000.600. What questions do you have?
So you guys have all been provided a copy of this. I assume you studied it till your eyes bled, but...
I'd like to give just a little backdrop. Brooke took on the responsibility approximately a year and a half ago of developing a pay grade system countywide, for the most part, anyway, that allowed us to begin to place employees in particular pay grades and understanding what that pay grade classification was and the expectations of moving forward into other pay grades, instead of just coming up with arbitrary numbers. We'd actually have a grade system, much like the federal government does, I'm sure. Shani gets familiar with how that works. And so she developed that, and then kind of the next step in that process is to look at those pay grades to ensure that the level of those pay grades is appropriate, that there's enough money spaced between them that we're addressing and adjusting for things such as compression. And one of the things that we're working on right now is looking at, when we come through these budget cycles, where do we disperse any potential extra monies as far as employee salary and compensation? And how do we determine that? And so we asked Brooke to pursue the opportunity for us to do a comprehensive classification and pay study, so that we could look at all the different departments and be able to not only determine how those compare with other counties that are comparable to Madison County, but also to look and see where we had issues of compression, to see where we had classification issues, job description issues, to see where we needed to modify our policies for things such as certifications and how those certifications would be rewarded financially. What else, Brooke?
I mean, it covers, this proposal covers a lot of stuff. It will create all-new job descriptions for all of our positions. It will look at the exempt versus non-exempt classifications for all of our positions. It will review the proposed personnel policy and just make sure that all of the laws and reference to general statutes are up to date and still current. It'll do a benefit survey and review our benefits compared to what other counties And it will present those results and also help implement those over multiple years rather than just one year, if needed. There's, if you were to ever add like new positions, you can have this company help you classify those new positions. I think per position, it's like $200. It's in the proposal, but it pretty much is fully comprehensive of everything that would be involved in a classification system.
So if we have current positions that are vacant, we're looking as far as how we classify those and the job descriptions, or maybe how those jobs correlate or work in tangent with other personnel in those particular departments, this organization, the MAPS Group, would help and assist us in developing those classifications for job expectations and performance.
Yes. It would basically do everything from the ground up specifically for Madison County.
And as far as, we've gone through enough people with the rate of inflation. Everybody knows that Asheville's cost of living is the highest in the state, and we're born next door to them, so the rate of inflation has even greater application to us. Let's say that the economy changes in the next six months, how is this going to be applicable at that point?
Well, this actually won't start until July.
A year, then.
You can work with this company, especially if you plan to implement the findings incrementally. So they will put you on a schedule and review it as they go.
Probably we spend $27,000 to find out our employees are potentially underpaid or that they're overpaid.
I think that this could be used as a strategic plan. I think with any initiative that you want to do, whether it be economic development, transportation, anything that starts with your staff and with your employees. So I think you need to know where you stand and what direction you need to be headed in. I think if you plan to create a five-year strategic plan, a big part of that's going to be your personnel expenses and what you need to do moving forward to be competitive in the workplace compared to other counties or other organizations.
Mr. Garrison, I can give you a little perspective. Mr. Rix asked me if I had any familiarity with this, and I did. Yancey County undertook this same group with the same plan in 2013 or '14. I think the cost then was about $20,000, and they did the same thing that's proposed here. Where Yancey County found it to be very useful is that they went through every employee you've had, and they said a scale up to show which of your employees are the least paid. And what they recommended is then, rather than giving county employees a 3% or 4% or 1% raise across the board, they recommended bringing the most underutilized folks up to the scale. And they looked at each department in a strategic manner, tried to get the lowest folks up a little bit level before, because you will not have everybody in the same boat, okay? You may have some folks that are being overpaid. They will tell you that based upon what other counties are paying, and then as you give your increases or pay consideration during budget, then you can focus on those ones that really need it. And you tried to do that, I think, through the budget process this last time without any of that information. Now, whether you find that to be appropriate, but I agree with Brooke in that that's how you would use it strategically. And Yancey County is still doing that. Even today, they're using that same plan to, and it's taken us six or seven years, and we are still not where we want it. Of course, you know that.
Well, that's exactly right. In the last budget cycle, we were just winging it. I mean, we knew we had areas of deficiency, and we tried to address the ones that were blatantly obvious, but we were just winging it, and this is an opportunity to give us a true game plan, how to address issues in the future going forward, and actually give us some continuity in how things go, whether the five of us are still here, two years, four years, six years, eight years from now, it's an opportunity, it's sort of a blueprint, I guess, that the future boards can continue to follow if they choose to do so.
Two things, Brooke. One is, it's more than just about a pay plan, and I think your presentation shows that, as well as what you and I've talked about, what's on this board packet. That being said, first would be the question that comes up, and I preped you for it. Why don't we just do it ourselves?
Well, I think there's a couple of reasons. I think one is manpower. This is going to pay for a team to put this information together for you and to present this for you, and it's going to take that team three to four months. So to do it in-house would take way, way longer than that. But also, just the availability of information and data. I can tell you, I've personally put out public records requests for, for salary information from counties, and don't get very much of a response. I think there's only so much information you can gain as like an individual working for a local government, as opposed to a company that this is their job. They've already got some of this information, I'm sure, put back, they already have access to it pretty easily, but they also have ways to get the most up-to-date information quickly. But also you have a team of people who are extremely qualified, looking at legal matters, such as your FLSA status or your personnel policy, which is in need of being reviewed and hopefully implemented. So I think, I think just a combination of those reasons.
Just for those, Brooke's been working with the board for six or eight months to develop a countywide personnel policy that's updated and addresses a lot of the deficiencies we've had over the years, including how we allocate pit story time and our drug policy and just a lot of things. And I believe you've said that this company would work in tangent with us to, they will review that personnel policy and make recommendations concerning all aspects of it if it was necessary.
Yes, yeah.
Do they give like a minimum starting pay for a position and say it's $30,000 starting out, 50 top pay? And do they give a plan of like after a year, they should be at $35,000 or $40,000 or...
So what they'll do is they will meet with a management team and discuss kind of what, what you're looking for in your pay study. So they will kind of get an idea of what type of, I guess, classification and pay system that we want. And then from there, they'll work with our department heads and our employees to get the job descriptions, and they'll take those descriptions and group them together into pay ranges, and those pay ranges will have a minimum and a maximum. I'm not sure if they'll create like an actual salary ladder for us. That might be part of our implementation process.
Yeah, my favorite. What's the number one downside? Size $27,000.
I think the biggest downside is spending basically $28,000 and then not acting on whatever information that you receive. This is some, this information is something that changes, and sometimes it changes pretty rapidly. So if you do this in July and say, okay, well, here in a few years, we'll get to it, it's probably no longer going to be relevant.
It's useless, there's a comprehensive plan that you pay in tens of thousands of, hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop, and then everyone looks at it, oh, that's nice, puts it on shelf, and it never sees the light of day.
The key to this is implementation. If, if, you know, there's no, I guess, move to implement the information, then it's, it's not very helpful.
I asked Brooke about this some time ago, and she says, are you sure you want to do that? And the reality of it is, is this may put our board at least in some light to the, to our, I don't know what carried, 300-plus full and part-time and seasonal workers, that there's some expectation, we're going to jump right into that pay plan, and that's what it's going to be. My response to that is, we have to start somewhere. We have to know where we're at in order to begin to develop a long-term strategic plan of if we have additional funding resources in the next few, two or three or five budget cycles, you know, how can we use those to benefit our employees? And so we have to have this data before we can even begin to make that assessment, and the information may help some, it may hurt some. We found this out recently with a department that was requesting some funding for employees. We were surprised to find that some of the employees that were accidentally lying at some work. So the caveat to it all is, is information's powerful and it's golden, but then you have to decide what you're going to do with it, otherwise it's useless.
I will add that I also talked to David Hill with the Piedmont Regional Council. They also provide this service, and I just had him give a cost estimate, and his cost estimate for an organization of our size was between $28,000 and $30,000. So I do feel like the MAPS Group is, is in line and probably maybe even a little bit less than what other places would be.
Do you know any counties in the area that are using them?
Using the MAPS Group? I know that the town of Boone has, Brevard has, Chapel Hill, Forest City, Hendersonville, Weaverville, Cherokee County has, Mitchell County has, Yancey County. There's a bigger list on the proposal.
Just all the counties.
This is all of the counties that they've done the work for.
Yeah.
And this does not only look at salary, but it looks at benefits too. So if we're getting paid health insurance, that's going to be counted in with the benefit.
It does include a benefit survey.
All right, any additional discussion?
Chairman Waugh, allow me to enter into a contractual agreement with the MAPS Group to conduct a comprehensive classification and pay study.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner, or by Chairman, Vice Chairman Garrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any additional discussion? I've got a question. Is this already in the budget?
It is not. I think Kerry's working on it.
So this will require a budget amendment?
For next year.
It'll be, well, actually wouldn't necessarily need to be an amendment, because we would just budget for it in the next fiscal budget, correct?
That would be, that would determine, sorry, Brooke.
What would the start date be, Brooke? I guess that would determine whether, when we need to pay for it, right?
So upon signing the contract, you're due your first payment, and it's broken down into four installments. And then thereafter, once, once they get to each phase, a different payment is due, or another installment is due.
Like four installments?
Yes.
It's in the packet there, you can see the amount. Just for the record, I don't like spending $27,000. I'd like to, just give employees that money, but I don't like flying blind either. The department heads, the employees in this county have entrusted us with a huge responsibility in making sure that we invest wisely in our employees, and then I have to have a map to go by to do that. I don't have enough sense myself to do it. Don't have the time to do all the research that it takes for it. When I went to work for the city of Asheville in 2000, I spent the first two months doing a salary comparison survey for three positions. That was it. And it was painful just trying to get information. I chuckle when you say you don't get a lot of response. It's painful just to try to get a salary, not counting all the classifications, the benefits, the FSLA, FLSA information. So it's a huge undertaking, and it is a team approach, so that's the reason I'm in favor of spending the money.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, moved to a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, it passes. Thank you, Brooke. Appreciate your work on that. Up next, Finance Officer Kerry Leffler. Favorite part of the week?
Mine? No. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Before you find your item number A, which is Budget Amendment Number Six, this amendment records additional funds to the Health Department through the VAX program, as well as for the Pinkout grant. You'll see funds added to the Maintenance Department budget for repairs to the water system at the jail, as well as for the continued work on the playground. Find also the recording of a donation to your library from the Friends of the Madison County Library, as well as an increase to the library's state aid funding from the state library system. As I stated last month, we have received our third installment of the opioid settlement, and here it's being recorded as the $63,084 and 22 cents. Here too, recording for the additional revenue generated by the quarter cent sales tax in the amount of $56,178.10, and these funds will be distributed to the Board of Education pending your approval of this amendment.
That number's staying pretty consistent, isn't it?
It is. It is. Yes, sir.
I just want to, a point of note that, Kerry, is it fair to say that our, that the money we allocated for Maintenance Department has not been sufficient for, absent of the supplanted money, which was supplanted to be utilized or allocated for particular projects, that our maintenance budget, generally speaking, has not been sufficient to keep up with the amount of expenditures?
That is correct. If, I don't, I would not like to speak for Jesse, however, I recall him saying there may be some issues with the heating and air possibly at the library that was unexpected and took a large portion of it, as well as some library, I mean, some playground work.
Also, I just want to note that in a conversation with several folks, that at some point along the way, there's probably going to be additional expenditures for reactive maintenance at the sheriff's office due to plumbing problems.
Correct.
Drainage and leakage.
Correct.
It's a 10-year-old building, and didn't allocate, and it's efficient for that. Just points of note.
So you've been presented with Budget Amendment Number Six. Is there a motion on the floor?
That's a one.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wyatt. Is there a second? Bill, you can get on scoreboard now. What's that? All good. I'll second the motion.
You're hard.
I'll second. So we've got motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Unanimously.
Next, item B is November's financial reports. At the top of that first page, you'll see that we are 41.65% into FY '23. On the second page, for all funds, we have received 37.85% of our revenues, and our expenses are at 35.5. So we are below in both, which is, which is better than being above in the expenses.
Right. Are we kind of on pace with the revenues?
We are. We are.
So nothing to be alarmed by at this stage?
No. You'll see that number hopefully go up dramatically come January's report.
Everything comes past due after January, correct?
That's correct.
I don't blame you, I'd wait till the last second to pay it to you guys, I mean, of course I did pay mine already. Just for the record. I don't, I didn't send you anything. All right. Anybody have any questions on the financial report? All right, Kerry, you want to talk about your grant project ordinance?
You will find item C, which is the Grant Project Ordinance for your consideration of adoption with what the 911 Emergency Director spoke on earlier. You approved Caleb's request, and here is essentially it in budget form, in form of the Grant Project Ordinance.
You vote to adopt that, do you?
Yes.
So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the grant project ordinance for the 911 Grant Program that we voted to proceed with earlier. So moved. Got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any additional discussion? Moving to a vote, all in favor? Unanimous once again. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Kerry. Thank you very much. All right, up next, Diane Norton, Tax Administrator. Hey, Diana.
How are you? I'm here for the monthly November releases and refunds approval.
Can you explain to our newer members and the audience exactly what this kind, what this entails?
So this is any adjustments that's been made to tax bills, whether they were billed wrong, they no longer have personal property, something in that nature.
You guys have any questions for Diane? I know it's old hat for Bill. All right. So at this time, we need a motion, or I'm looking for a motion anyway, for, to approve the tax refunds and releases as presented by our tax administrator.
So moved.
Commissioner Briggs. Next motion.
Thank you, Bill. I love the way you did it, Bill.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any additional discussion? Moving to a vote, hearing no discussion, moving to a vote, all in favor?
I thought this crowd wouldn't.
That's right. It's all good.
I really don't have an update from Kenya, they're working on a year-end report for us, but I can tell you that I have about 60 properties currently in foreclosure.
60?
Mm-hmm.
So different levels of the process, I assume.
Correct.
Good.
It's fair to say that the majority of people, the folks that are going through this process are paying their bill, and we're having a minimal amount of actual foreclosures and auctions.
Correct.
And if you could, just for the sake of this board, but also people in general that might be listening, explain just very briefly the process of, we've contracted with Kenya and how that unfolds, and, and the money that, that is spent, and who spends it when we have those foreclosures and...
It typically doesn't cost the county anything. If they send a demand letter and the taxpayer comes in, it can cost us $65, but other than that, all the fees are put back on the taxpayer.
So demand letter sent, you owe us money, pay it.
Which I try to do that first. I send my own demand letter before I send it to Kenya.
They get one from you, then they get one from the attorneys.
Correct.
And then after that, then the attorneys begin, they commence the process of identifying vested people that have an interest in this property, property owners, if there's five of them, if there's an estate, they send them notice, they begin to work with them to try to settle the, the debt of the tax debt, and any costs that's incurred by the attorneys at that time would be paid by those that owe the debt.
Correct.
And they would have to pay the attorney fees and their outstanding tax, and doing so, then their property wouldn't be auctioned on courthouse steps.
Correct.
So there's plenty of opportunity for them to come in compliance before we get to that place.
They have until the day it goes up for sale on the courthouse steps.
And there's plenty of time to get into compliance before they incur legal fees as well.
Yes.
And at no point other than $60 or $70 does the county incur fees.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Diane.
Y'all have a good night.
Have a good night. Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is Donnie Laws, County Attorney. Brief our newer Commissioners on... Brief our newer Commissioners on some inner workings in regards to county boards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a lot of folks, and I'm not implying that you are those folks, but a lot of people in the general public have some confusion about the interrelationship with the Board of Commissioners with the three other major boards that you've got in Madison County, which is the Health Department and the Board of Health, the Department of Social Services and the DSS Board, and the Board of Elections, and the Board of Elections Local Board. Those are, those three are Boards of Madison County. But you all do not oversee those boards. Or you do, you govern those boards. And you actually have very, very little control over what happens with those boards. Oftentimes, when those boards do something, folks think that since they vote for you and you're a Board of Commissioner, then you can do something about it. And the answer to that is generally, you cannot do anything about it. Of course, the Board of Education, you have less control over that board than any of the others. They have their own elected body, they have their own superintendent, they have their own finance officer, they have their own budget. Okay? What you can do and what you're obligated to do by statute is to fund those boards. If you do not adequately fund Board of Education, they can sue you for appropriate funding. Another source of funding for them, which what you've done in the past is recommend and make allowances for the portions of sales tax that statutes will allow you to do. And those statutes set forth specifically what monies go to them and how you can allocate that to increase in your debt, economic development, if that's the case, which you're well aware of those and you've handled those in the past. The DSS Board is a little bit different. Not that you have any control in that, but you do have two appointments to that board that you can make. That board is made up of five members. And they recommend the DSS Director. The DSS Director is the CEO of DSS. You do fund DSS. They do not have a finance officer. They do not have a budget. Kerry takes care of all monies that go in and out of DSS. The county does fund DSS, but the major players in DSS funding is the state and federal government. About everything that DSS does is governed through either federal statutes or state statutes. They did juvenile court, they did Medicaid funding. You can't do anything. If someone gets denied Medicaid funding, there's nothing you can do about. Anything DSS does, you have absolutely no control over whatsoever. Going to, to the next one that you have a little bit of influence on is the Board of Elections. Board of Elections has its own board. It's made up of appointments from the state Board of Elections. I think they appoint two folks from each of the major parties. And then the governor appoints the chairman of that board. They have a supervisor that is the DSS, or the Board of Elections Board and the State Board of Elections are the folks that basically say who that person is, how they'll be appointed and how they may be unappointed. You have no control over that. What control you have over there, them is again budgetary. Everything that goes in and out of DSS, again, is handled by your finance director. Finance officer. You are obligated to fund the Board of Elections in an amount that is reasonably necessary for them to maintain and run your elections in Madison County. If you don't do that, they can bring an action to get sufficient funding properly. Once you give them that funding, you have no control over how many people they hire and who it is. Going on to the, the Board of Health is probably the one board that you really don't have any control over them, but I'll explain to what extent that is. Your Board of Health is a county board. It is made up of 11 members that you appoint. Now, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Whitwell, I know you're on that board. Three of those are public members. The other eight have to have certain professions: physician, dentist, veterinarian, engineer, registered nurse, maybe one more that I've missed.
County Commissioner.
Yeah, there's a county commissioner appointee on that. The person who serves as the county commissioner appointee has to be a county commissioner member. You cannot appoint someone else to do that. And that person only serves as long as they are a city member. The Board of Health...
That's the thing with DSS as well, correct?
No, that's not.
They, the county commissioners?
County commissioners do not have to appoint, do not have to sit in that capacity. They can appoint any person if they want to, and that person will serve their full term. So that's a little bit different.
Gotcha. No mistake.
If it is happen, if it does happen to be, no, that's the way that that operates.
I'll clarify that. So you have a county commissioner that's serving, going to serve on that board or is serving on the board, they could appoint, we as a board could appoint that position citizen.
Yes, you can. You've got two appointments to that board. The Board of Health, major role other than setting rules is to hire the health director. They hire the health director in conjunction with consultation with the county commissioner. Basically, they have to tell you who they're going to hire, and you can give them feedback, but you cannot veto that. The health director is the CEO of the Health Department, which means that person has the power to hire, buy, give, and appointments, recommend the budget with help through the board as to what the budget needs to be, recommend contracts to be entered into by the Board of Health. Now, when I say you may have a little bit of control of the Board of Health, what that means is any contract that the Board of Health enters into has to be, I'm going to say, is with the approval of you all. Okay? So if they're going to enter into a contract for personal services, if they're going to enter into a contract to buy something or anything like that, since that goes to the county, that has to be approved or it has to be done with the approval of the county. And when I say the county, that is something that is usually delegated to the county manager. So when the health director needs a contract that's signed, they somehow get that over to the county manager and say, hey, this is something I need to sign, county manager. Sometimes county manager counter signs it, sometimes county manager just signs off on it, but it needs to run to the county manager's office. But you want the, and then your board approves certain fees that are set. Not environmental fees, but other fees that the board... Your board recommends those fees. They generally bring them to the county once a year, and then the county reviews those fees, whether they need to go up, down, or adjusted. But they set their own policies. They, they run their own shield. You have no control over what programs they do run. You have no control over their employees at all. Board of Health employees and DSS employees are governed to the state personnel. They have protections that are offered to the state. Your regular county employees do not have those protections. They are, they are, they run through your HR department, through your county manager, and as it is right now, ultimately through you all because you control hiring, buying, and discipline at this time. So basically, what you have is they come to you and tell you how much money they need to operate, all of these boards. And basically, you've got an obligation to reasonably fund this. They have a means of, if you don't fund them, to ask an independent third party to do that. Regarding Board of Health, there's actually legislation that was passed in 2014 that obligated the counties to maintain efforts to fund the Board of Health. You cannot drop down below levels of prior year's funding. Otherwise, if you do that, you risk that board losing state and federal funding, which is where the majority of their funding comes from anyway. So, you know, what I'm going to tell you, your short answer is that when someone comes to you, and you should listen to their concern, if it is a concern that deals with any of those boards, that concern needs to be taken to the administration of that particular board and let that chief executive officer deal with it. Board of Elections needs to go to the supervisor of elections. DSS Board needs to go to the DSS Director. Board of Health issues need to go to the health director. Board of Education issues need to go to the superintendent. You can give them that direction because there's nothing that you individually, or there's nothing that this board can do about it in the existing structure that Madison County operates under right now. And I, I mean, I'm telling you, I brought all of my statutes, I brought all of my correspondence, I reviewed this since Mr. Briggs asked me to look into that. Nothing has changed. I've done this for 32 years. It's the way it is. But that still doesn't stop people in the community from coming to you because folks say vote for you. And when they vote for you, they don't do this every day, and they think that you may have more authority to do something than you don't. So, so you know, what you can do is send them in the right direction. There's nothing wrong with them going to a Board of Education meeting. There's nothing wrong with going to a Board of Health or to a DSS because that is where they can have their concerns expressed. Okay? You have any questions?
It's good.
But the bottom line is that we don't have anything to do with hiring and buying.
You have absolutely nothing to do, and you cannot do it even under the structure you've got right now. You could not do it if you wanted. And if you attempted to do it with the Board of Education, you would be violating a statute that says this board cannot interfere with the workings of the Board of Education. They have that protection.
Anybody have any questions, Donnie?
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Donnie. Up next is our new interim county manager, Rod Honeycutt. While he comes up, I want to do a brief introduction. That's all right, Rod?
Sure.
So upon completing 37 years of active military service, Rod Honeycutt retired from the U.S. Army in July of 2021. As a native of western North Carolina, Colonel Honeycutt has family ties with Madison, Yancey, and Bumpin Counties. He was a career logistician. Legis- did I pronounce that right?
Logistician.
I always get that wrong. I always hesitate on that. So he's a career logistician, serving, leading, and commanding in Europe, the Middle East, and Pacific theaters. He and his wife Lisa Joy live in Alexander with their three sons, all of which pretty much serve in some form of public service. They followed their dad's footsteps on that. And the Honeycuts maintained their Alexander, North Carolina home throughout his entire military service. And ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you our new interim county manager, Rod Honeycutt.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the board again. Thank you for the appointment. And first, let me acknowledge the task from earlier tonight about the courthouse, and understand the gravity and the sincerity of which we must undertake that. I want to thank the staff today for Norris's sendoff. It was well done and his appreciation of what he done for the county. So far, my progress has been in a seat for all of seven days now. I've met with 10 of 20 agencies and have got an in-brief from all 10 of those agencies and feel very comfortable in my role and my interaction. One of the things I have found out, there is some turbulence right now. There are some worries. We've got five new county commissioners, or three new county commissioners and a new board and new town manager. And my message to everybody is just reduce the turbulence. Let's do what we're designed to do for the county and proceed on. My way forward between now and the Christmas break is to complete a meeting with the rest of those 10 agencies. I have five items on the agenda tonight I need to cover with you. The first one is the policy on public comment. And that is, a updated version is in your package tonight. This is an updated policy from August of 2019. It basically changes time-specific slots for speaking and makes it more general, that there'll be a 30-minute period in which we'll have public comment before, during the meeting. It adds public comment during public hearings. So that was the two main adjustments. And I need your concurrence for consideration of adoption of this policy.
So and just to clarify, because some concerns I've heard from the public is that we were going to either limit the public comment or move the public comment to later on the agenda, neither of which take place under this proposal. Is that correct?
It adds a separate speaking time during a public hearing and removes a restriction from time constraints of when we actually meet. In case we had to move for a special meeting, there's no longer just a timeframe associated with public speaking. But in no way does it hinder the public from commenting.
And the individual will still have three minutes to speak, so there's no, no reduction in time there as well.
Yes, sir. And noted the comment tonight about publish your agenda at a sooner time.
I want to say, even though sometimes we're the brunt of it, I like public comment. I find it to be interesting, to be educational. You know, we want to hear what we, to represent. So I see no reason why we wouldn't want public comment. We've discussed, you know, the idea that ensuring that everybody gets the opportunity to speak about whatever it is they want to speak about. Two things I didn't know, Colonel, is that under item 1D, that the speaker can yield their time. I have great concerns about a speaker yielding their time to someone else. That being done so, it takes time away or opportunity from other citizens to voice concerns and opinions and support when we simply know that the time somebody else is giving to them is just going to be further discussion of the first three minutes they had to... had to start with. And so, I'm looking for other people's opportunity to share their voice and their concerns and their opinions, so I do not support speakers yielding their time to other speakers. You've got three minutes, same as everybody else, and just because you dragged 10 people in here and all 10 of them want to give you their three minutes, and that affords no one else the opportunity, so. That ties along with item 2B, which has the word "need" to change, or has the word "shall" under item 2B. When in essence, if you look at item, in accordance with item 2D, under public comment, it allows the opportunity for people in public hearings to, if they didn't sign up, they can still speak. And as a matter of fact, it actually spells out how that process goes, that before we have public hearing, we actually identify those that are going to speak, the seven people to speak in the public hearing, and then we ask, are there any other people who would like to sign on? At that point, they give us their name, and we register them to speak. So, I think when you say you shall sign in under 2B, you're, that's not necessarily true. I think the better term for that is you may. And then if you don't sign in, then you can still sign in at a later date verbally. And the last thing is item 2E regarding in public hearing. I'm reiterating the same thing for public hearings as I am public comment, that I don't believe we should be allowing speakers to yield their time to other speakers. It takes away from the opportunity of other citizens to voice concerns, opinions, and supports.
Sure, acknowledge.
That's my thoughts on it. The board, obviously, can have that discussion as far as the rest of it. I'm totally in agreement with.
And I do like the fact that this does allow for, if you've got 10 people who are here to essentially say the exact same thing, rather than listen to 10 people say the exact same thing 10 times, they could delegate a spokesperson to deliver that message, which we would encourage them to do if you're going to say the exact same thing as the person before you. So, that I believe is a good option and a good change, so I do like that and appreciate that. It doesn't give them any additional time, but it does allow them to speak on behalf of more than one person at the same time.
Which affords other people the opportunity.
Allows additional people to have a say, so.
I can make those two adjustments and back for legal review or adopt tonight with those adjustments implemented.
There's no problem with this. This was just sent out as a proposal for you to review, just like you reviewed tonight. So, with those, there's no problem with those two adjustments. The major reason that we discussed this was the policy that we had that was in existence only addressed the required public comment that we have at the prior, at prior.
Beginning of the meeting.
It did not have, we did not have a good policy on how to conduct public comments at the hearings, so.
This is a great time to review it. We discussed it in the office, so it's perfect.
So, I have, from a legal perspective, I have no problem with either one of those changes, if that's what you want. So, if you want to, you could delete those two, or delete the two paragraphs and change the word "shall" to "may."
Yes.
And then adopt the policy as modified, if that's what you choose.
But you're not keeping the people from saying the same thing. I mean, that's not going to keep, if you've got a high percentage of people that want to say the same thing, then they're going to have a right to do that, right?
That's right.
They can designate a spokesperson, which we would hope they would do, but if they choose not to, they have the right to.
They don't have to.
Right, that's correct.
Colonel, I appreciate you and Donnie Pippin on this.
Well, I'm going to give credit where credit is due.
It's going to Mandy.
Mandy.
Mandy, and I read it, and the Colonel reread what I had done in court. I didn't know he was an English teacher, but he gave us the changes. So, you're getting a product that comes through.
Well, thank you all three. And I don't say it, but I figure everything we do here comes from Mandy, so. And we're thankful for her expertise and leadership in it. I make a motion, or I move, Mr. Chairman, that we accept this policy with the aforementioned revisions.
So, we have a motion by Vice Chair Garrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor? All right. Thank you, everybody who was involved in that.
Mr. The next item on the agenda is property lease for consideration of the Mosaic Management Consulting. This is the two rooms, rooms 303 and 304, that's currently being utilized. This is an initial June of 2022 lease. It is up for renewal. All documents have been endorsed but have not been submitted to the Leasee. It has been legally reviewed, and my recommendation is for you to adopt this, for us to move forward to retain those two spaces through 2026. And that will tie into the board for the courthouse as well.
And that is with the intent to provide additional space for the district attorney, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
There was discussion about concerns for security for the district attorney. Who is, who would then be responsible to provide that, if any? Attorney laws or Colonel, either one of you?
Do you know anything? The first time I heard about security for the district attorney was at tonight's meeting.
That's the first I'd heard of it as well, so.
I have a question. I'm, maybe I'm just lost. This contract started in November. Am I looking at?
I believe it started in June of 2022, and then it was up for rewrite at a reduced price, once we determined the price reduction was about $1,000 per year over the next consecutive five years.
I think I can elucidate. This was originally, remember, we had put a hold on the entire third floor of the building. We hadn't taken possession of it.
Like the lease option?
Yes, we were paying money to Mosaic because he had someone who was going to move in there, but while the courthouse committee was reviewing what was going to be appropriate, we didn't know whether or not we were going to need the third floor. But we were paying him. We started the lease exactly back when the Colonel said we did. We paid on the holding fee for the entire third floor. We did not exercise that option at that time. The reason this is dated November 1st is that the interim county manager at that time said that the courthouse committee was going to recommend only using two of those rooms. The lease that I drafted and sent to them had, was a lease, was a 12-month lease starting November 1, 2022, running through November 1, 2023. It was on a monthly amount to be negotiated. So, when I sent it over, it had a blanking. It had two additional one-year periods with the county having an option to renew, and I left blanks in those amounts because at that time, the clerk and interim county manager was still in negotiations with the owner as to what those amounts were. So, I sent the lease over, and I'm assuming that you may have filled in those numbers with.
No, it was filled in prior, knowing that it has not been submitted to the Leasee that entered into an agreement until the board approved it.
Even though the Leasee and Leaseur both signed it?
Yes.
It's the lease that I sent over dated November 1 been signed?
Yeah, signed by both parties. That's what's confusing when I look.
What's in the monthly, what's in the amount of the rent?
It starts out as?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
So, when I sent it over, it's been taken, and those numbers have been put in there. But you never author, I mean, I'm assuming that's the reason it's on tonight, it's for you to approve the lease.
My understanding was, is when I was made aware of this very recently, was that this would eventually be a recommendation, along with other things from the courthouse committee, of things that we would need to do in interim while we pursue a new courthouse. This would be one of those recommendations. I've talked with the district attorney, I've talked with the former interim county manager as well about it, but my understanding was it was going to be an abbreviated hold negotiation to say, we'll give you so much money to hold that till January, till the committee meets, and until the board actually makes a decision as a group as to the allocation or approval of that contract, and also how the money would be, what money would be utilized to pay for this contract? Would it be court monies? And if so, would those court monies be offsetting or taken out of our fund balance? Or would it be part of the 3.8 million that's being utilized for this process? So, curious, giving me the meaning of it.
If that's the case, it was prematurely endorsed.
So, I guess my question is, are we retaining and are we going to, have we entered into some type of contractual agreement to retain at least the option on that, those two rooms, until the January meeting, when this board would then decide, based on the recommendations of the courthouse committee, on the totality of the interim plans and what funds would be allocated to pay for it?
And more importantly, does the DA even want those rooms?
He does.
Okay.
Yeah, I've talked to him at length, but they're in really bad situation.
We walked through the rooms this week.
With the DA?
Yes, sir.
And he was apologetic if there was any confusion about how this process went forward, and he and Norris both expressed their apologies.
My understanding is that the lease was to be approved by you all tonight, if that's numbers being put in there. That was, and I thought that's the reason it was on now. I think what you can do, if you want to, you've got a lease that is signed. I think you can ratify that lease, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I don't want to really do anything until I get a recommendation from that courthouse committee on the totality of what all the needs are going to be. I don't want to pull one thing and then find out that the committee's going to recommend we do three rooms, and then also we do something on adjoining property or something. I'd kind of like to have the totality of the recommendation, but that's just, I'm open for discussion about it. I want to make sure that whatever we do in the end, that we don't lose the potential property that we're going to need over the next few years, so.
So, someone needs to go back to the landlord and see what he's willing to, if he's willing to extend the lease and what's going to be the payment terms for it. And I guess what you're going to need is, if the committee's going to meet in January, then you need him to say, hey, I'll hold this, I'll take it off the market to January if you want to pay me X amount of dollars a month.
And my apologies, I'm sure that interim county manager and former Commissioner Gentry had conveyed to me kind of a game plan for that, once the discussion was made about the board hadn't actually had a chance to look at the lease. Unfortunately, I don't know, I don't remember what that was.
And I don't remember, when I talked to him and I prepared the lease, I said, what amount needs to go in there? And the reason it was left blank is that there was not an amount that was communicated to me. I got that right.
Donnie, are there any legal ramifications for the county for having to, for this lease being apparently signed prematurely?
Well, I mean.
Without authorization?
From my opinion, leases need to be approved by the board. That's the way I look at it, and I thought that this lease was put on the agenda to be approved by the board tonight. That was my understanding.
That's what I thought too, until I saw the packet.
So, I think probably the appropriate thing to do is that we want to stay on good terms with the landlord because we may need the rooms. I don't want him to be expecting a November rent payment as well as a December rent payment, and it's not worth coming. I think that Colonel needs to speak with the owner, with the landlord, and convey to them what the wishes of this board is. So, if you have, I mean, if it is you need to wait until January to get the recommendations back from the board, ask him. And we don't know what rooms we even want him to take off the market right now, do we?
It mentions, yeah, I think room number.
303 and 304.
Just those two. We just want him to.
Well, and the thought is, the committee may determine that more than those two rooms are needed. I don't think they're going to say less than that is needed, but I do believe there's a possibility that committee could come back and say a third room is needed, or, you know, so.
What do we need to communicate? Is it Whitlock? Is he the one who is this? I need to talk Whitlock and tell him exactly what it is we want and get his understanding as to what we're going to take to reserve that.
I think we've got to go back and do due diligence for September, October, and November because the lease expired in August. Expired August 31st.
Do you recall, Mandy, what happened to that interim?
That lease was not needed, and I was told that we had a renegotiation because the needs of the courthouse have changed, lowering the monthly payment in addition to the amount of space that was wanted to be utilized.
The original lease that was signed was for, was signed, was effective June 1, 2022, that you all did approve. It was for June 1 through August 31 of 2022. It had an option for us to renew during that period of time, which we did not renew, which we paid the monies for June, July, and August. And at that time, that lease terminated because we did not exercise the option. And right now, without you approving a new lease, there is no agreement between us and him as to what the understanding is. He can take a position that the lease was signed by the county manager, who apparently had apparent authority to sign the lease, but whether or not you indeed gave him to that, you never do.
And that was endorsed December 5th.
Oh, this is taking place in the last two weeks.
Yes, sir. December 5th.
November 1st. Thanks, reason I queued in immediately for the November 1st issue. So, it was signed on December 5th?
Yes, sir.
Same. December 7th.
Same.
Second December.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, I got you. I'm still preferring the original statement, which was that we communicate with all parties that were involved in this process and then ultimately talk to the person that owns the property and see what it's going to take to secure that
That's exactly what you need to do.
The recommendation of the working committee and make a decision on, on allocating those funds each month.
I'll approach Mr. Whitlock to get his recommendation.
He wants to do what he can, he's always been great about it, but he is a businessman that has people interested in this property. And he has to consider that, so I'm sympathetic to that, even if there may have been a little bit of, you know, handing off the, the con, there was a little bit of fumble on our part.
Is this an issue of implied permission possible?
I mean, apparent authority and the county manager's signature appears on something. And if you're dealing with, i- i- if you're a vendor or a vendor and you see the county manager's signature on something and there's going to be, it's going to be implied that he did have that authority when he did, and I don't see, I, I mean, I think if you go back to, to, to the owner of this and just sit down and have a conversation with him.
Good faith negotiation.
Yeah, i- i- it, it needs to be cleared up. I mean, what he's going to say is that the worst that could happen, he's going to say, hey, you've got, I've got at least to lease these two rooms to you. Well, it may be come January that you need three rooms.
Right.
Okay, so then, you know, that, that may even make him happier to do that. It, it may come up in January, if you think you need at least two rooms, then, you know, you, you, you've got at least for that, but, you know, if you need more rooms, he needs to be put on notice that
To give it
You're asking him for more.
Yes, sir, to give us time and space to approach him and do due diligence, I think we've got to ask him to give us until the January meeting to come back to him with a new proposal.
Fair enough.
Everybody good with that? And I'm sure former commissioner Gentry conveyed kind of his game plan, I just remember what it was and I'm looking for it, so we'll move on.
Any additional formal action need to be taken place tonight, Donnie, on that? Just instruct the county manager to enter into good faith negotiations with the
Yeah, to see, to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
Okay.
With the target date for, of actually entering into a lease agreement in, in January.
Sure, if we think we need a third run, then we need to put him on notice that he may, because he may be planning to rent it out to somebody else tomorrow.
We're good.
Good. Next item on the agenda is county on surplus. And right now, we have one property, two point three three acres, valued, tax value of seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. We've received two bids, the first bid in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars and the second bid in the amount of one thousand dollars. Recommended action is for you to consider to accept, deny or issue a counter offer as requested.
Chairman Reckel, I make, I move that we reject both of those offers.
Second. I'll be asking price. So we have a, right now, we have
On the table tomorrow.
Get it from my bag. Can we do that?
There's a bidding process for it.
Okay.
It's surplus property.
See Mandy for the documents.
Stand forth, thank you.
Yes, sir. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. A motion by vice chairman Garrison, second by commissioner Wyatt. Any additional discussion?
Almost went into auction mode.
All in favor? Man?
The next topic is the county board appointments. Following on the prior discussion, you have a list of board appointees and appointments for your consideration. There's quite a long list there for you to review.
So we'll take them one step at a time and I know I was unable to attend the last economic development board meeting because we were on a outing for another project. But commissioner Garrison was able to attend, which it's the board that he is involved in on a regular basis anyway, so I believe you've got an update for us, commissioner Garrison?
I do, in essence, two of the board members are currently serving, serving in good faith and there's a lot going on in the economic development board. They're very familiar with the history of it and so the recommendation from the board on those two is that they've requested to be reappointed for the length of their terms. The third one being recommendation also that for the vacant slot, that that slot be filled by Scott Haney, who is a lifelong resident of Madison County, who also is a business owner in the county.
So is your motion to reappoint Bruce Murray and Ryan Cody to their existing position, to their current positions?
We do these one time, Donnie, we always have this discussion.
Yeah, you make sure you're appointing them to the particular seat that they're in in case they have shift run. So I would do them separately.
In this case, all three have the three year terms.
I move that Bruce Murray be reappointed to the economic development board.
So we have a motion by vice chairman Garrison that Bruce Murray be reappointed, is there a second?
Second.
Second by commissioner Wyatt, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that Ryan Cody be reappointed to the economic development board. He's actually the chairman of it right now, just was recently appointed to it.
So we have a motion by commissioner Garrison, now second. Any discussion? All in favor? The open slot for a three year term on the economic development board, certain nomination.
Maybe we go with their recommendation of Scott Haney, member of that economic development.
Smoke, a motion commissioner Wyatt, is there a second?
Second.
Second commissioner Hensley, any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to note that we had several people put in for that board and I want to encourage those folks to continue to do so. As vacancies become available, it's good to see this much interest from the various people in the community, so I'd see that.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, move forward with the vote, all in favor? All right, so those three pop, spots on the economic development board have been filled. Next on the list is juvenile crime prevention board. These are two completely vacant seats and the juvenile crime prevention board has recommended and has sought out the applications of student Jennifer Blankenship and student Sarah Holder. And entertain a motion at this time to fill those two vacancies with those two individuals recommended by that board?
There's no other applicants for that too, by the way.
Correct.
So move.
Got a motion by vice chair Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by commissioner Hensley, any discussion? Moving to a vote, all in favor?
Did you leave one out on the economic development board there, or just did three? Our, our scheme was still on the list here.
Did we miss, I don't
Of course, it's gone. I think that's upcoming next time, is that correct?
Yeah, we've actually, that fourth term would be for the January meeting. He's, he's good till then. Thank you, Bill. Good eyes. All right, so we've got
Parks and Rec advisory board.
Yep, we've got Parks and Rec, we actually have
That is upcoming January. So that's going to be January consideration.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mandy, is that fourth position on the economic development board, is that for January? Is that why you gave it to us in advance?
Thank you for doing that.
On the recommendation sheet, so I've listed it on the January appointments.
Very good, I like getting them ahead of time, that gives us a little more opportunity to plan. Thank you. Thank Brad. All right, so getting back to Parks and Rec, we have one, two, three, four, five spots on the Parks and Rec board. You've got, now those are an attempt to place people from different segments of the community. So there's seats for Marshall, seats for Marcell, seats for Hot Springs. In this case tonight, we've got two seats for Marshall, one Marcell spot and two Hot Springs spots that are available.
And only one is currently vacant, see all of them that are, are reappointments. And one that's vacant only has one applicant.
All right, so at this point entertain a motion to reappoint Jonathan, and correct me if I'm, if I'm looking at this wrong, Jonathan Wallen, Eric Allen, Matt Boone and Marcus Nelson?
All three year terms.
Yep, the three year terms.
So move.
Got a motion by vice chair Garrison, second by commissioner Hensley? Any discussion? All in favor? So those, and now we've still got one remaining seat for the Parks and Rec advisory board and that has been searching through my applications here.
Mitch has served on other boards in the county, he's a business owner, very highly regarded. I make a motion that Mitch be put into the vacant slot for the Hot Springs Parks and Rec advisory board.
Marshall actually.
Oh wait a minute, that may be a problem.
Yeah, he's from Marshall and you've got the vacancy as for Hot Springs.
Scratch that.
Is that the only applicant they had for that?
That's the only other applicant we have this time, so at this point, I would entertain a motion that we table that position?
And seek, yep.
And, and send that, we need to send that back to Chris Maney so he can recruit somebody to fill that spot for Hot Springs.
Good catch, man.
So we've got a motion by commissioner Garrison, table that final appointment, is there a second? Second by commissioner Wyatt? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Next up, we've got two spots for the watershed review board, are those desired to be reappointed, Colonel? Or are we, because I don't see any applications at all.
How can I plug that?
We've not received any applications for that, there are stipulations.
Man, can I talk to you about that?
Not right now, you can't.
No, no, not right now, but
Not, not right now, you're out of order.
Ten fourth.
Thank you.
There's stipulations to serve on that board and board members of the watershed review board must live within the Beachland watershed or the Marcellan watershed, so if you are not property owner and you, or do not reside there, you cannot be eligible for appointments for that.
So you have to live within the watershed?
Or be a property owner.
Or be a property owner, okay. So that being said, we table that? So we need to
Clayton Williams not agreed to do it?
We don't know, it doesn't say. We can table until next month and you can talk to Clayton, how's that? I would assume Clayton would continue, I would also assume Billy Anderson would be willing to continue, but we don't have anything from that board indicating that, that they do or that they desire to do so. Or there could be a term limit situation, I'm not familiar with that. No term limit situation on that, okay. So at this point, we entertain motion to table that until January and send that back to the watershed review board for recommendations or solicitation.
Something we probably need to do is reach out to this, do we do that?
Typically, the board contacts with the, that would reach out to their members. For the commissioners, but always choose to reach out to anyone that has questions.
The board should be reaching out and confirming with their board members if they wish to seek a reapplication, reappointment.
And there is a reapplication process as well that they need to participate in. So is there a motion that we table this?
So move.
Motion by vice chair Garrison, is there a second? I'll second it. Any additional discussion?
I just got a question. We know that Jonathan Wallen, Eric Allen and Matt Boone and Marcus Nelson put in for those jobs, if we don't know that Clayton Williams and Billy Anderson.
Reason I asked the question, I think we set a precedent there.
Back up and table with others.
Not even give us a little direction.
You, you certainly can, I mean, if you don't know that they are going, want to serve. Someone who tells you that, that they don't want to. And I think as general practice is, is that we try to reach out and ask those folks if they want to, to, to do the additional term. They're, they're going to serve on it until their replacement is appointed anywhere. You're not going to have a vacancy unless they have a sign.
Now, I, I, I think chairman Hensley ma- makes a very good point and the concern with me is not just that they might not want to serve, they might not live in this county. They might have moved, you know, we don't have any information on maybe
Good enough. Your motion, do we do that?
I'm moving to back up.
Jim, with your permission, I'll reach out to each of the candidates to confirm, take it off your plate.
Better, you could actually just reach out to Chris Maney, who's the chair that, or the department head for that Parks and Rec.
Look, I met with Chris today, but we did discuss this, but we'll put that on the, to make sure that we know who has, has not given intent to stay on the board.
So we can, that'd be a good thing, you can delegate to him. We've got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by commissioner Wyatt, motion was by commissioner Briggs. Any additional discussion? All right. Place it, let's move it to a vote, all in favor? Correction has been made, good call, or good catch. All right, that's it, that's all we've got.
You've got one more. The additional topic we added
Is that right, Mandy? Oh, my mistake. Brought my reading glasses in, I'm sorry. All right, so for, these are appointed boards, these are for boards with commissioner representation only. And our first up is our land of sky board of delegates. And that is a seat that has been vacated due to the election. So we need to appoint a new chair or a new commissioner to, to fill that spot? Yeah. Well, I'm trying to think.
Is that a vacated position, man, or is that, you know?
I can't read, it's too small.
These are, these are boards that have commissioner representation, though if that person is no longer a commissioner, who would you then need?
Well, I was, I was that guy, that's the reason I'm wondering, just Norris one as well, or is he just functioning as an interim county manager?
I think he was functioning as
Or to be the zoning director.
Yeah, it was commissioner or the zoning director, do you have representation on that particular slot, if I'm not mistaken? Commissioner Garrison, I have the chair in front of me, but I think that was the best I could think of.
So it indicates any board of commissioner member or zoning director, Brad is already, Brad already serves on land of sky.
That's what I was, it's Terry in the vacancies, what I was
Thank you, I think the previous one was either the commissioner or the zoning director, that what it says on your So I think it was the one that you made it, the other was able to go the time alternate.
Yeah, kind of, I like that, the reason I say that, we care to hold that open and, and hopes that we're going to fill Terry's slot.
Cover it as need, or cover it as available.
Have representation, I'm on that board, so it's not like we, we don't have a delegate and Matt also serves in greater capacity there as well, so.
I mean, we can cover it, that's not a problem.
I think if you wanted to do
Cover it in the interim.
I think if you wanted to do this time what you did last time, to say, a member of our board will I think if you wanted to do this time, what you did last time, to say, a member of our board will serve, or when we get a zoning director, that person would serve.
And this is, if I remember correctly, this is an at-large seat on the Land of Sky. And so in that case, since you're already assigned there, then any other, any other commissioner can can fill in in that spot, and I'm usually there anyway because I am on the executive committee that meets immediately before, and so if they have a form issue, I can stick around. How's that? So what, so what we'll do, Manny, is we will, we'll continue on with the process, it would be any board of commissioners member or our zoning director once hired. How's that? All right, now make that in a form of motion. Is there a second?
Thank.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, any discussion? All in favor? Next up is Land of Sky French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization. I am the commissioner position on that. Marcus Nelson was the alternate. I'm willing to continue on, it would create a little bit of a hardship if I didn't continue on, because I'm the chairman of that board. So I so move, I'll continue on, but we do need to, we do need to do an alternate if the board so desires to allow me to continue on. We've got a motion, are you just motion, is your motion just pertaining to?
You start with.
Okay, so for the, for the main seat there on the French Broad River Metropolitan Plan Organization, we've got a motion by Vice Chair Garrison. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Briggs. Any additional discussion? All in favor? All right, now there is an alternate seat on that board. And that opening is created by the, by Commissioner Nelson, former Commissioner Nelson. So we need an alternate, is there a nomination, anyone would like, let me ask, anyone that would like to serve?
Do it, they meet Wednesday. I can't either. Work issues.
How about Bill? I nominate him. You're an alternate, Bill, you'd only be obligated to go if I can.
Got these young fellows, I need, I need to get on those committees.
I know, but that works.
Well, they can take off. Can't work out all the time, you know?
Just for the record, I use my lunch hour to attend. You would rarely have to go, I can't.
And I'm in Asheville anyways.
I haven't, I haven't missed a meeting in a couple of years, so. So we.
Commissioner Wyatt be appointed as the alternate for the Land of Sky French Broad River Metropolitan Plan Organization. I was going to do it anyway, I just hope that he'd come to volunteer state. So you kept looking away.
Motion by Vice Chair Garrison, second by Commissioner Briggs. And any additional discussion? Moving to a vote, all in favor? All right.
And just for the record, these boards are actually very informational and hugely beneficial for us as a county to be involved in them.
And I need to correct myself, because I, I definitely need my reading glasses, I'm getting tired. I stated that I was the chair of the French Broad River Metropolitan Plan Organization. I am not, I'm just a board member of that, I am the chair of the next one, which is the Land of Sky Rural Planning Organization. Everything's starting to run together here, so my apologies, if that changes anyone's opinion of that last vote that went down, please let me know, we could change it. All right, so now next is the Land of Sky Rural Plan Organization, of which this would be the one that committed, that caused the hardship, as I am currently the chair of that organization, so. At this time, open the floor up for nominations.
I'll nominate Commissioner Wactel.
Got a motion by Commissioner Briggs, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hensley, any additional discussion? Moving to a vote, all in favor? My apologies for the miscommunication there. And finally, we have a seat on the Via Health County Commissioner Advisory Board. This is vacated, this was formerly occupied by Commissioner Gentry. They only meet quarterly in Asheville. The time varies, which I believe would lead us to believe that the board kind of governs when they're going to meet. So at this time, I would open the floor for nominations to fill that position vacated by former Commissioner Gentry. Via Health is, they provide, they're the mental health provider for our area. Hearing nomination by Commissioner Hensley for Michael Garrison. Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor? All right, now I think, actually, hold on, we've got one more spot, flip it over to the next page. Via Health Advisory Board. Kathy Price was the current appointee there, anybody know Kathy want to continue to serve, we don't have an application for that, do we?
We, we previously only had one seat on that board last year, I changed, and we so in addition to a county commissioner, the sheriff's department represented, or health department represented.
All right, so I'm going to move that we table that and task the Colonel with reaching out to the sheriff's department and or health department, I would say both, and see if they've got someone there and see if we can encourage individuals to apply for that spot.
Acknowledge.
So I made that in the form of a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, moving to a vote, all in favor? That spot's been tabled, so I believe that finally catches up everything there, is that correct? And then you see the ones we've got, coming up in January, one spot for Economic Development Board. Currently occupied by Vice Chair Forrest Gilliam, I assume he's going to wish to continue on in that position. Coming up in January, you want to stay on the Economic Development Board, you need to get your application in. All right, all right, and then we've got two, so we've got a spot on the Housing Authority Board, Library Board of Trustees, and two for Tourism Development Advisory, those will be coming up in January. So that that closes out that part of it, we've got technology discussions coming up, thank you Colonel.
So have your questions.
Thank you Colonel. So for the Technology Department, Jamie, would you mind stepping up? So what we need to do is have a discussion, hopefully a brief one, because this is getting mighty late. So technology discussion, quite frankly, we have a need, I believe, on the board here for the new commissioners to have some technology pieces, which would, which would essentially be laptop or tablet, something along those lines.
Yes, so with everyone, I know we got two laptops, but we were looking at maybe just go ahead and use them, because Commissioner Wactel's and here's our county property, so we would get three additional, well, actually, if we have the budget, we would get all five, the same if you wanted to do that. I know Commissioner Garrison has a newer laptop. But in hindsight, I think it would be good if we had five of the same computer. Personally, I would do a laptop, a fifteen point six inch laptop versus a tablet. We can get a better deal.
Can the manager get a laptop?
Two, yes, and it's fairly new.
Yeah.
So. But yeah.
Billy, you have interest in having one? Well, we're talking about buying new stuff, so.
We could, your budget would be about eight hundred to a thousand dollars per.
Right.
Laptop, so.
And that, that was budgeted for in the last budget cycle, so the money is there.
Just for technology, okay. Yes, so I mean, it's up to y'all if y'all want me to find the best deal.
I would.
I want to just add a point, one is, these have, these have worked, but I know Matt's personally, I've watched it shut down twice, and Jamie's actually had to step in and work on it. It's a lot of work for the staff to try to put books together compared to just doing one and scanning it, and everybody just goes to the portal and accesses it. So it's not only more environmentally friendly, but it's safety and paperwork and administrative management staff.
So do we need four or five, Bill? Or we need to give him some direction?
It'll look good.
We can get you a tutorial. All right, so let's, let's explore trying to find a good economic alternative to the, serve all five of us well.
Okay.
Trust your judgment on that. All right. Thank you, Jamie. All right. We've got one final action, and that is to go into closed session. For personnel and attorney-client privilege and statutes that apply to that, our North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6 and General Statute 143-1, I'm sorry. General Statute 143-318.11A3. Is there a motion?
I'm going to make a motion, say that after a brief recess.
Okay, take a quick recess.
Make a motion, we enter into closed session.
Motion by Vice Chair Garrison, second. Second by Commissioner Hensley. All in favor? All right.
This time, uh, entertain the motion to, uh, re-enter open, uh, open session.
So moved.
All in favor, back in open session. So, uh, at this point, um, let's see, Brooke, want to present, Ms. Irvin?
Um, the Emergency Operations Department has requested Ms. Irvin McKinsey Hensley as 911 Helic communicator.
So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Garrison, their second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, any discussion? All in favor? Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Hensley, any discussion? All in favor? We stand adjourned?